Michelle Pryor, joined by Vice Chair Anthea Brady, members Bill McGonigal, Paris Spiani, Mike Bentencourt, and Acting Town Manager Steve Delaney. So we're going to just roll right through our agenda. I'll note that we have another meeting on Monday in this room, and then in November, town meeting starts, so our meetings will take place at the high school, probably in the principal's office. So we won't be on Wind Cam, but we will be meeting with the door open. So if you want to go through acceptance of donations.
Move that we accept with gratitude an EEC stabilization grant of $13,720 for the Recreation Department Code Connection wrap EEC childcare license for the month of October 2025.
Same.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move that we accept with gratitude donations of $550 to the Council on Aging for appreciation of transportation services.
Same.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move that we accept with gratitude donations of $880 and gift contributions to the Council on Aging.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Steve, we'll turn that over to you in the Town Manager's report.
We had hoped to have an update on the Mystic School basement structural analysis. That's still in the works. I'd hoped to have something for you this evening, but it's not quite ready yet, so I don't have an update on that one. Second item is we're doing the Town Manager Warren hearing for town meeting scheduled for next Wednesday, October 29, 6:00 PM at Town Hall in person with Wind Cam broadcasting.
This room.
So they'll be here in this room next Wednesday at 6:00. The third project comes from the Vale Project parcel back in 2021. A settlement agreement was reached and it was agreed the developer would convey a 16-acre parcel numbered 1-36 on Sunset Road. We received a call from the developer that they would like to move forward with the conveyance of that parcel. In speaking with the individual a couple days ago, their council will prepare the legal documents to make that happen. So that will help pull that project together. And that's what I have for you, Tene.
Okay.
Can I ask you a quick question? One of the ongoing projects by the Mystic School is the installation of some RRFDs at the crosswalk right there. It looks like that's started, and I've had a number of families ask me what the timeline to get into completion is, especially now that it's getting dark.
We'll get that for you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I drive by it all the time, so. And then for select board members, if you can, if you can be present for the public hearing on next Wednesday, I think that would be helpful. We have, I think, seven articles in the warrant. Couple of them are on consent, but we have, you know, we have solar and 160 forest and other things, and to the extent that there may be questions, it might be helpful to have us in the room because we're not going to be hybrid, so. Just sharing that. Okay. Is anybody here for public comment? Since I recognize all of you, like, maybe you have something you want to say? No? All right, moving right along. We don't have a public hearing this evening. We do expect a public hearing coming up, right, Patty? In the next meeting or two?
Yes, next week will be to a regular location and potentially some changes to...
Business license?
Yeah, business license.
Okay. All right, so then we'll go into the business agenda. So the first item is senior circuit breaker. Dan McGrill, Mr. Nowell, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I believe you got a handout from us on Friday. How you doing? On the 18 people who qualified for it, and the max that they're able to get is 2730. And what I ask for is for you to vote between 50 and 200% of that number, because not everybody gets 2730, but we use a percentage to determine what else they get. So 18 people, last year, the, you gave a max of 3,000, if I'm right, yeah, 3,000. So now you could go up to 54, 54, 60. The only problem is if you go too high with this, potentially next year, they would not qualify because they wouldn't, 10% of the taxes wouldn't be enough to get the circuit breaker, so you got to kind of be careful. We don't really know what people's income can be, so it's up to you to pick somewhere between 15 and 200%. Like I said, last year you did about a one and a quarter, maybe one and a half.
120%, something like that?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
That's what I, that's what I remember.
Somewhere in that range.
Okay.
So my view, and the highest number anyone claimed was about $2,700, is that right?
2,730, correct.
2,730. So we're not actually hitting the ceiling for anybody?
Correct.
At the moment? I do think it's important we, we do make sure we have headroom for those who want it. So given the state adjusted, my math, if you took the level of the state's adjustment and applied that to 3,000, I got like 3,450. So, you know, one idea for the board is we just stick with the percent increase the state did, which would land us right around, for even numbers, $3,500.
That $3,500 was where I was landing as well, so.
3,400, 1.25%.
Yeah, somewhat arbitrarily, but that was...
Yeah, but it's, the state's percentage increase translates to right around 3,400, 500, so.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Can you vote a percentage and not a dollar amount, though?
Sure, what's the, what's the basis there?
27? 2,730.
27, yeah, we'll do it. 1.282.
1.28, 28%?
Sure.
That gets you to...
128%.
Sorry, 128%? Yes.
And I move that we adopt a senior circuit breaker of 128%.
Same.
Of 128?
Of 128% of the state's, you know, 2027 figure, which is $2,730.
Is that the number how you need it, Dan? 128%? That's the motion?
Yes.
Okay, good. That's the motion, right? Paris, you just made it?
Yeah, I seconded it.
You seconded it? Okay. Any additional discussion? No? Okay. So Dan, can you talk about if, just, how do people lose, if their income, is it more that they hit the 50s, 54, 60 is the ceiling? How do people run the risk of not getting it the next year? Is it that they've had too much excused, or that their income, or the house is...
It could be both.
Okay.
Because no one knows what their income's going to be for next year. But if you give them a large exemption, let's say the tax is $10,000, and you give them a $5,000 off, they're already down to, you know, only 5,000. That means their income's got to drop equally to be at least 10% to get the circuit breaker on the state income tax.
Okay.
So that's why it's always a question of how high to go on it.
Okay.
The tricky part, I mean, they could obviously take less than exemption. The tricky part is they may not be aware of that.
Yep.
And the values go up each year, too. That number changes as well.
Right, right. I know you explained it last year, and I was trying to remember. How is it that you get it and then we somehow shut them out? But if they get, if it's too generous in theory, then it's not a significant enough burden in the next year. Got it.
And that hasn't happened yet, right? Where somebody's been bumped out?
Not that, no, no. We had a few drop out because their value went over what the state allowed, but not that I know of anybody under 10%.
Okay. And is 18 people this year, is that trending reasonably consistently?
Yeah, it's about that number, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So the next topic is residential tax exemption.
You have to vote that?
You have to vote on it.
Oh, we did.
We did not.
We did not? Oh, we had a second? Okay, we had a discussion, sorry.
Yeah.
All those in favor of 128%?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. I thought we did. All right, next up, residential tax exemption. So we had a discussion at the table last time we met around potentially implementing residential tax exemption for all residents. Could be anywhere between 0 and 30%, Paris, is that correct?
35.
35%.
Under MGL, yeah.
And select board has not taken a position on that. I think there's some interest in doing so, but we had not settled on 5%, 10% or beyond. So wanted to maybe just, A, give you a heads up on that, Dan, and talk through kind of implementation concerns that you might have. I think the goal would be if we settle on a number of, you know, four, six, eight, again, might be five, might be 10. We haven't decided yet. It could be something in between. We would be looking to do that for July 1, so for the quarterly tax bills going out in July, not for January 1. But just a conversation with you about what kinds of, you know, how many forms are we updating? What kind of volume do we anticipate? It's going to be owner occupied, right? So obviously, there's a certain number of apartments and non-owner occupied, but maybe just talk through what some of the implementation considerations are? That'd be helpful.
You would, you would vote it, actually, at the tax classification hearing next November, because that's when the actual vote is to be, take, take place. You vote tax rates and the residence exemption, so it'd be next November we would do that. But by giving us a head start, you know, letting us know, we can kind of work something out here, because I have to know how many people qualify for this. And in order to qualify, you've got to file an application with us and prove to us that it's your owner domicile. So you have to give us, generally speaking, the front page of your federal income tax. In Winchester, I've done some rough numbers, we're probably going to be somewhere around 6,700 people qualify for this out of roughly 7,500, or, you know, somewhere around 85% give or take, which is a pretty high number based on other communities that do this. It's really only towns, and Concord is the only real town that does this. And their percentage are a lot less. I, I looked at what they, what percentage of their properties get the exemption, and for example, Concord, which is the most similar to us, is only about 66% of the people get it there. Because they, the way the Concord assessor explained to me, there's people who own more than one home there, and you can only get it on one property. You can't get on every property you own. Here in town, for us, the problem would be condominiums. The median value is about a million four, give or take, and 96% of all condos are under 1.4 million. So you're treating that class, if you will, a little nicer than single-family homes or two families. You know, it's your option. Roughly 50% of single-family homes would be getting exemption, I'm sorry, every one would get the exemption, 50% would be paying the same or less in taxes, 50% the same or more in taxes. So the upper end, anything over 1.4 would be subsidizing the lower end. It's your call. For us, it's, we'd probably get about 6,700 applications, like I said, coming in. It would take us some time to do that, because we're going to have to get, you'd be surprised how many people want to hand-deliver their applications to us. So if you let us know, and it's tough because you can't, you can't vote it until next November, so it's hard for, maybe the board could vote it after the March election, you could say, we're really looking at 10%.
Why can't we vote it this November?
Because this is the memory of voting for this year's tax rate.
So the way that the tax classification works, this was a quirk in the 1979 tax classification law, the original classification law, but then in the 2016 amendments under the MMA, the Municipal Modernization Act, they sort of changed the timing, which allows us to implement it anytime. And I think that's your question, Bill?
Yeah, that's what I...
The original, the original way we, we did it, pre Prop 2 and 1/2, was, which is still the, well, the way it was done until 2016, is we vote now, and then the new rates take effect only for the third and fourth quarters of the fiscal year, which is a quirk that the '16 law shifted. And to your point, you know, Dan, we could indicate we're doing it sooner, and then confirm that in the spring with, with a vote.
Right.
What Concord did, which is why it was such a brutal process for their assessor, for Meredith Stone, is they voted in November, and then they implemented in January. So they had like seven weeks.
Right.
And that was extremely tight, so.
And they only had about 3,600 people applying.
37, yeah, exactly.
So it's quite, you know, it's quite a bit less than we would have.
But what you're, to be clear, I think the, what you said, Dan, would be how we would do it. We would, it's this old quirk of the way it works that we only implement for two quarters, right? After the classification hearing. I think we would be thinking about it more for the beginning of the fiscal year, so we would hold a second classification hearing in the spring. I think would be the obvious...
I couldn't, I couldn't change the tax rate, though. I can only change the tax rate the one time, in November. Because I have to, what happens, you're taking...
Why not?
Pick a number, you're going to take a million dollars of valuation and take it off the tally.
Yeah, you have to recut the factor. Why couldn't you rewrite the factor for the, for the beginning of the fiscal year? Because you have to rewrite...
I don't know what the values are at that point.
But you'll have to rewrite the factor anyway if an override passes?
That's, that's for the next year, though, not then, not for July 1. The override wouldn't go into effect until...
Genuine? That's the implementation of the override?
I mean, we can, what we do, I think we're a little ahead of the game sometimes. Let's say, for example, you're going to have an override and it's a 5% increase.
Yeah.
I would then, when we do a first and second quarter, I would push it a little bit to get that, you know, like one and a half each, each quarter, so it's not like a whack at the end, the third and fourth quarter.
So I guess, here's what I'm asking, so if, let's say an override passes, whatever the dollar figure is, in March, would any of that increase in the levy go into effect on July 1st at the beginning of the fiscal year? So you're, you're planning to implement all of the, the new tax factor in the third and fourth quarters?
If it's voted for July 1st, that's what you should do. But like I said, I try to, I try to see the numbers of what new, what the overrides are that are coming up, because each year it changes, Morocco and everywhere else that we have, we get about 20 of them. I try to see what the increase is going to be from the previous year, and if it's substantial, like last year with the Lynch, I try to bump it up that first two quarters, a little estimate a little bit high, because I know it's coming across. My understanding is, I thought your, if the election was, actually, if the vote was in March, is it for fiscal 27?
7.
Okay. Then I would have to...
So I guess the point I'm getting at is, the factors are changing anyway, right? It's just a question of are they, are they changing it for the first quarter on July 1st, or are they changing for the third quarter on, on January 1st, third and fourth? It sounds like you're saying somewhere in the middle, like...
Yeah, I could do the override a little bit. I have a little more leeway with that. I suppose I could really try to play with it, do something with the regional exemption, but I've got, I just don't have anything to go off of. I don't know how many people are going to be applying, so it's kind of hard to do it. Plus, I don't have values. If you vote 10% exemption, my values aren't done until October, November. So I wouldn't, so in July, you know, 10% of what? I mean, I can roughly, I can roughly guess things, but yeah, it's, it's a little tougher to do it at that point.
Okay.
How does this compare? Don't we have an exemption for the CPA as well?
This is flat, 100,000.
Yeah. How, how did, how did that rollout go? How long?
This is, I'm trying, this is the first year we had it? Yeah, it is.
July.
First year, yeah.
Yep.
For us to do it, officially doing it?
Yeah, I mean, how many people...
Well, everyone, everyone gets it. No one applies. Everyone gets it.
Okay, so that's already been applied to everybody who qualified for that exception?
Everyone, there's no qualification, as long as you, you get a, well, you don't get it in commercial, but everybody gets 100,000 off their value.
But wouldn't the previous, so if you implemented July 1st, wouldn't the previous year's valuations just be in effect? Because that's what you're taxing off of, anyway.
They're there, they're there. What we, actually, it's not the value, it's the tax bill. So let's say you had a million dollar value last year, the tax rate was $10, you paid $10,000.
Right.
Comes to July 1, that million dollars is sort of there, but when we do the first, second quarter, it's based on what you paid in taxes, not the value. So you pay $10,000, a quarter of that, 2,500 is how we, how we do it. You don't take the value, you take what you paid in taxes.
Okay.
So we probably need another meeting on implementation.
I think we need a meeting on implementation, because I, I think this is raising a second question, which is the implementation of...
Timelines.
Yeah.
Yes, agreed.
Exemption, but also the override itself, yeah.
Yeah. Can we get a written memo on this timeline, at least as you understand it, for the override and for the exception, exemption? It's a lot to keep in my head.
I guess I wasn't even tracking the point of if there is a material change in revenue, you're not actually adjusting the tax factor until, until the classification hearing for the third quarter.
You can't, correct.
Yeah, so we forget about an exemption, even that alone is, is different, right? Because then what happens is actually your third and fourth quarter tax factors would be higher, and then the first and second quarters of FY '28 would, would actually come down a bit.
Correct, from the third and fourth.
From the third and fourth. So it would be like, it would stay flat, then it would spike up, then it would come back.
Right, that's right. When we know these things, I try to bump up the first, if I know a big number of the overrides coming up, try to bump up the first two quarters a little bit, so you don't have exactly the same.
A bit of smoothing, yeah.
Yes. Okay. So more to come on that, but thank you.
Okay.
Any additional questions for Dan or the Board of Assessors, since we have you in the room?
Thanks, guys.
No? Okay, thank you.
All right.
We'll see if the classification in November.
We will.
Forget which day we're on. I think the end of the month, maybe. Okay. Next up, transfer station permit fees. And good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, how's everybody?
I think you know everybody here, I assume. You've met Steve in the past...
I know.
Oh!
Oh, that's right.
Nick Parley.
Transfer Station Nick. Nice to meet you.
We have Recreation Nick, we have Transportation Nick. There's probably a few others hanging around. There's a Nick at the Janks, so there's...
Nick Parley.
Nick Parley, exactly.
My pleasure.
Nick runs the transfer station, does a great job at it. So we're here tonight to, we owe you a report on the pilot program that we ran late summer, early fall. We have a breakdown kind of of the four items that we had discussed we'd look into, and I'll make it, if you want to go through.
Yeah, so the, the four things that we were looking at was revenue, wait time, fees, and ease of the program. I believe there's a spreadsheet in your packet, but the, the breakdown is the net revenue between the two companies that we invited to participate in the program was $11,589.05, and that's July 1st through September 30th. Wait time, just to, so July 1st through September 30th, the transfer station was open 67 days. The combined number of trips between the two companies was 168, giving us an average of 2.5 trips per day. So, you know, traffic into the transfer station, fairly minimal. You know, there was some backups to the pit every now and then, there were some backups to the scale, but nothing overly egregious, nothing overt, call it 10 minutes or so.
Did that happen on a certain day?
Yeah, I was going to answer the same question.
No, there was kind of no primary reason to it. But, you know, as, as the new companies sort of acclimated to the transfer station, they kind of found their own rhythm of when it was good, when was good time to come. One of the companies seems to be utilizing it more on Saturdays, which is busy residentially, but not that busy commercially.
Okay.
So even on Saturday, Nick, it wasn't an impact necessarily to traffic flow for residents, having them come in on Saturday? Because I know we had talked about excluding Saturday, you know...
No, it, it hasn't really impacted Saturday operations.
It's like we've heard about it from our neighbors, like, oh, what's that truck doing? Right? So I guess that's probably good.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm not aware of any complaints that...
We didn't receive any calls down at our office. I don't know if you guys heard anything from residents or whatever.
I did not, speaking...
No, and I've, I've seen commercial haulers there, you know, on Saturdays when I've been using, and it hasn't been an impact from, from just anecdotally, but I, I was curious about that. Haven't heard complaints from residents.
Yep. So fees, there was some initial skepticism by the two commercial haulers that came in because we were, you know, charging a premium. But, you know, I kind of urged them to, you know, give it a, give it a test run, give it, try a couple loads, see how it goes. And they, both of them were pleasantly surprised with how quick they could get in and out of the facility, and how we are a one-stop shop for helping the haulers deal with the waistbands, the electronics, the mattresses, the concrete, the metal, the textiles, the books. These, you know, if you went to another commercial transfer station or a incineration facility, you know, you don't get that. You get to dump your load and you leave. So some of these junk hauling companies that are doing cleanouts are able to do, you know, one-stop shop. We did notice that, I think we were being, taken advantage of a little bit on the mattresses. We charged 25 per mattress, and that's kind of a legacy price left over from a previous company that we used, where it was $18 per mattress and a $300 haul fee to get rid of the container. We kind of budgeted $25 per mattress. They wanted unfettered access to the facility, which wasn't really working out for us. We went to a new company, and they are $26.50, so we're effectively losing $1.50 per mattress. So that's, that's something that became really apparent in this program.
So the recommendation to increase it, is that something, I know we're talking about permits and stuff, is that fee, because I did a little market rate of that and some others, would we be changing that fee for the mattresses, say, effective July 1? I know it's, it's set by select board, but if we're looking at some of those...
January 1, January 1.
Sorry, January is what I meant.
Yeah.
January 1. Because other towns are charging 60, 50, 60 bucks, 100 bucks.
Yeah, I mean...
$50 commercial, $30 residential, there's even a split. So 25 was, of the four towns I looked at, the lowest on the mattress.
So, you know, and we have a pretty reasonable disposal deal on the mattresses as well, that I think if we, if we want to do a commercial rate and a residential rate for mattresses, if we want to do one rate for both, there's, there's different ways to tackle this project.
Okay.
What, I mean, if, if Michelle, the numbers you just said, why, should we just do the commercial at 50 bucks, then?
50 and 30 or something?
Yeah, we could do 50 and 30.
We can keep the residential.
We're losing.
Residential is 25, right?
Yeah, we're losing about 50.
I'd keep that where it is.
I would do 30 and 50.
Put 50 on the commercial.
I don't mind losing money now and then on the residential.
I don't either, yeah.
But it's still 400 mattresses a year. Because you gave me the statistics. It's like two-thirds are residential and one-third is, I'm sorry, two-thirds are commercial, one-third residential, so we would still be losing money on 400-ish, 500 mattresses a year. I'm sure.
And we may have to start, you know, increase, what's always hard for us, especially the transfer station side, is when we make like huge jumps, right? So it's better to kind of incrementally increase some of those things that we know. I mean, it's required to, you know, that we have to handle the mattresses in a certain way, right? You can't just throw them in the trash, so...
So we can come back to this, but I just, because I've been tracking...
Something that should be...
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know...
But if we just did 35 across the board, no commercial differentiation, just the number you gave me is 1,482 mattresses, but, yeah, because I was asking for numbers, that would generate an extra $14,800 a year.
I think you'd see a drop.[1506.62]
Just move it to thirty-five bucks.
Yeah. Do you think that that's strategic, that we get more mattresses in the commercial side because we have a lower fee?
Well.
But going up by ten bucks from twenty-five to thirty-five?
In terms of disposal facilities for mattresses, there's none near here. Lowell, Fitchburg, and I believe Medfield are the kind of the closest mattress.
That's not that close.
Not with a bunch of mattresses.
So, you know, you could go up. There is, I'm already getting residential complaints about the price of disposing a mattress in a box spring. I'm not getting that many commercial complaints because I think they realize that, you know, it's a deal.
Okay. We can have a broader conversation about fees at some point.
Didn't the cost of that increase recently? When it switched to from disposal to recycling or whatever? And then we increased the cost of the mattresses a couple, two years ago, maybe?
I think it was, I think it was at least two or three.
Yeah, it was ten dollars to put it in the trash. And that's how we were accounting for the weight with that ten-dollar fee.
Right, before the DEP mandate.
Yeah, right.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so that's been about five years since I ended.
But I'm also consistently surprised with how many mattresses people throw away. And we've gotten one round mattress and one heart-shaped mattress.
Oh, my.
You'd think we're in Vegas.
You don't need to know that.
Fun facts from Nick.
Fun facts from Nick is right.
Imagine seeing that residence trash as a revealing.
And the final, the final criteria that we judged the program on was ease of use. We had one rejected load. That was a barbecue grill that ended up in the trash. The hauler forgot it was on the truck and dumped his whole load. And we found that the opening up to the out-of-town haulers one hour later on the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday was difficult to enforce. You know, if they got there twenty minutes before their window and there was no one in front of them, we just let them go. It wasn't, I wasn't gonna have them wait twenty minutes to, you know, dump their load if there was essentially no line.
Okay.
Were there, is there generally no line first thing on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
Tuesday and Thursday, there's generally a line first thing. But, you know, Wednesday and Friday, it's, it's pretty quiet early in the morning.
Should we just cut that to the first thirty minutes rather than the first sixty? Or should we just get rid of it?
I, I haven't run into a problem yet. Not, not to say there won't ever be a problem, but in this first, you know.
I mean, we could keep it and let them have the discretion that when there's no line, they can do it. Nick can, Nick can be graceful.
Yeah. And if there's five trucks ahead of them, I have no problem telling them that, you know.
Yeah, helps protect our locals a little bit.
Yeah, well, part of the intent of that was because of the transfer station's location between the high school and Morocco of.
School drop-offs.
Just making sure that trucks, they're not trucks that aren't familiar with that going through.
Yeah. Probably keep it with some grace, as Bill says. I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
And I think, I just, I think Wednesday and Friday makes sense to keep it, but Tuesday and Thursday if.
If you have the discretion to waive the time, I think, just leave it. Just leave it.
Do we have any feedback from the commercial haulers about things that they would like or, you know?
Lower prices.
Things that will entertain, but, you know.
I, I don't know much more what we could give them, to be honest with you. It's, it's a pretty special facility that, you know, can offer a lot to a hauler.
Is there any additional demand?
Oh, there's, yeah. I mean, honestly, we probably get fifteen, twenty hauls a week, you know, from haulers, from residents of other communities.
How did we pick these two then?
Local. And they.
Nick knew them. Thought they'd play. No, seriously, it's people you wanted to do business with who might respect the rules. And they applied, yep.
So the only two applied?
We were actively soliciting companies that had bags trash, but we couldn't, we couldn't get any just because they've set their companies up in such a way that they have larger trucks that it makes more sense to go straight to a disposal facility. So we ended up kind of on these junk haulers as the way to fill this tonnage gap that we were, we were looking at.
I guess the question is, is there, are there more companies that, you know, all the criteria, in terms of they have the smaller trucks, that makes sense?
So I don't know how much more I'm comfortable bringing on just because I want to reserve some cushion room in case anything goes wrong. And, you know, we're starting to get into the realm of more capital investment in equipment. That, you know, this is kind of a happy medium to what we can handle without additional funds into the transfer station.
What do you think that we would need as far as capital investments? Before Paris asked the question.
You know, as, as you scale it up, you'll need additional trailers. As you scale it up even further, an additional tractor to haul the trucks. And then you're probably talking some additional manpower to operate that second tractor if we can't, you know, absorb internally.
The wait times, the wait times for the trailers take up a lot of time for them.
So if we stayed with two, I'm not saying we will, if you went like two to four, right? That may not tip you into another trailer. It's, you know, and it's two trips a day, it's in theory four trips a day with the new folks, maybe some wait times. But I understand, we're not going from two in a pilot, which we think we committed to, you know, our local haulers and our neighbors as well. We're not gonna go from like a pilot of two or three new vendors to fifteen to thirty overnight. And we're still kind of at, we were trying to go two to three, we're at two, maybe we go two to four.
Yeah, I was gonna say no more than five.
But we're not trying to rev up because more tonnage we get, the more we're wearing through the trailers. You may have some staffing needs, and we may need to limit even from a traffic perspective, right? We need to be thoughtful about when they're showing up.
What's the additional tonnage that we're using? So we had nine thousand roughly tons, and how much does this take us up to?
We're licensed up at fifteen, twenty-five thousand?
We're licensed twenty-five, we're at nine, well, we authorized this.
We only did like, the two companies brought in about a hundred and ten tons, so not a lot.
So maybe a different way to think about it is, so we've gone from nine thousand to slightly even more than nine thousand, right? So we're not even talking.
To ten thousand.
We're not even, I guess we're not even talking to go to ten, we're talking to go ninety-five.
Ninety-five hundred.
Right. So that's because you can count number of companies, but it also depends how much they're bringing. It sounds like you're thinking, is it ninety-five hundred is kind of where you're comfortable?
I would say sub-ten.
Sub-ten.
Sub-ten, okay. That's helpful, okay.
Have you heard anything in terms of feedback from residents or other users? Has anybody noticed or complained about an impact in their ability to use the transfer station?
I'm not even sure they realize.
That's good.
Right, yeah.
How do we typically get feedback from residents and transfer stations? Usually just emails to DPW or is there?
That's how I get emails, I get phone calls and whatnot. You guys hear it from residents at the facility.
At the facility, right.
Throwing their bag.
Haven't heard anything on this topic.
I appreciate the data, and I'm glad that we decided to go through September as well to get into the back of the school, people away from, you know, back from summer and people that took off for, you know, June, July, or July, August. So I appreciate the tracking that you did. I think we need to think about, you know, mattress fees and some other fees. But any other questions on the pilot before we get into this broader transfer station kind of enterprise discussion? Because I know Leanne's dying to give us revenue numbers.
Do, like, the companies have inquired, you know, are they kicked out November first?
Okay. Let's, let's have that discussion right now, then.
What, can I just ask, what are we voting on tonight?
Extending at least these two companies in a pilot.
Extending the commercial pilot. Are we setting new residential and commercial rates for January first, or is that, we're gonna do it later?
I don't know, I want to hear what Leanne has to say. So I'm not sure we're gonna set new commercial rates yet tonight.
Do you want to talk about it now?
How do you want to do it, Paris? So we can certainly tell the two that are currently participating that we're not gonna kick them out. But if you want to hear more about the. No, if you want to hear more about the broader enterprise, we can take it in that sequence. How would you like to do it?
No, I have no, no particular desire. We can, we can talk about the whole thing at once. I was just wondering if we're gonna, is that on the agenda for tonight to set the commercial and residential rates? Or is that a later meeting?
If we're prepared to, we can.
If we're prepared to, of course, yes. Oh, we can, okay, all right.
Okay, so you all got the spreadsheet with the analysis.
Hold that thought, Nick, we'll get back to you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So if you look at the bottom figure, we compare, just as a broad discussion, we compare revenue versus expenses. Most of the revenue is calendar year because of the permits being sold from January on. So last year was the first time that we did the revenue without the capital fee. So we did the same thing this year. So if you look, just, you know, I'll go through quickly. First vehicle permits, we had about forty-seven-twenty, which didn't go down too much from last year. We were all concerned that, you know, with the increase, that people might back out and start getting it taken from their house, but we really didn't see much of that. So that's one point three oh eight million. Second vehicle permits, about fifty-one for fifty. Low income permits, we have about a hundred and twenty-eight of those, forty-three fifty. And that also includes second permits for the low income. Pro-rated permits for new residents were ten thousand, two fifty-five dollars. Replacement permits, one, one-day permit, we had thirteen of those for six fifty. And the commercial hauler permits, we have twenty-six of them, including second permits for each additional vehicle. That's almost fourteen thousand in revenue. And the Winchester-based business permits, we have twenty-six of those as well, and that brought in about seventy-four hundred dollars. And then when you go to the second part of the recycling revenue, on the textile recycling, we have that new vendor who's giving us four hundred a ton. Is that right, Nick?
Yep.
Four hundred a ton, believe it or not, for our textiles. And that brought in thirty thousand, four fifty-five this year. We would have had, that was only three payments because.
It's a quarterly payment.
Yeah, it's a quarterly payment, so we should have four. But this one was only three because we started late in like October last year.
So ten thousand a quarter.
Yeah. Actually, it was like twelve thousand the last check we got. So it varies, but it's, I would say projections about forty grand.
People clean out their closets.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep, okay.
So that was a big increase this year. Metal recycling, twenty-four thousand, five oh six. The Scale House revenue is projected through calendar year-end at nine hundred and sixty thousand. As of today, year-to-date, it's seven hundred and eighty-six thousand. And we figure about ninety thousand dollars a month for the Scale House revenue. So we're projecting around nine sixty for the remainder of the calendar year. And commercial recycling, which we started this past year, that brought in eighteen thousand, four hundred and forty-five, so we had about two hundred tons at one fifty-five a ton. So our total revenue was two point four three zero, zero three eight. And under the FY twenty-six expenses, the operating budget, combining salaries and expenses, is one million, nine hundred, ninety-four thousand, eight hundred dollars. And then the indirect costs underneath that add up to about three hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So our total expenses are a little over a hundred thousand less than revenue. So right now, we're in the black. So our revenue exceeds expenses.
That's good.
So they have four. You guys can, can take what you want with that, but.
I have thoughts on that, but I'll let others start.
Okay, so that's, that's the good news, I suppose.
That is good news.
You know, it's not a huge, you know, every year, you know, sometimes we're behind, behind a hundred, sometimes we're up a hundred, you know, it's, it's in that range, so it's not like.
Yes, exactly.
It's a huge win for us to start making cuts around.
No, no, no. Last year, we had a gap of about a hundred and fifty, and we didn't raise rates.
So to your point, it's, what, four percent?
Yeah.
Yep.
And it looks like the operating expenses actually went down this year.
Yeah, the main reason for that is the overtime budget. We kept a larger budget for the overtime from a couple of years ago and just forgot to reduce it. Yeah, so we didn't use it, so we just reduced it.
A lot less manpower not putting the stickers on the car. It's a tremendous increase in manpower.
Definitely, yeah.
License plate reader.
To that point, can I ask you a question, Michelle?
I think the question's over.
On the license plate reader stuff, you know, A, how's that been going? And is there kind of, besides the enforcement side of things and kind of a deterrent from people getting in there without stickers and all that, have we noticed any trends around like usage, you know, of times people are coming and, you know, higher volumes, lower volumes?
Not that I, that, you know, particularly stand out to me. We're entering our busiest season of the transfer station, which actually is leaf season, not, not the holiday season, because people make multiple runs per day when they're, they're cleaning up their yard. But, no, nothing, nothing's really stood out to me in terms of, you know, out of the ordinary about what, what times people are coming.
Okay, just as far as our, our opening hours and, you know.
It's slow Wednesday and Friday during the day. You know, it's busy the last two hours of Saturday. You know, kind of all knew that.
Yeah, we've tweaked kind of the opening and closing, you know, certain times, you know, over the years. And so that's why I was wondering if the license plate reader kind of data helped drive any of that.
I have a diligent employee that's trying to get Thursday changed to a, you know, regular day. But the, the license plate reader data show that it's, it's used throughout the year. So it's, it's not something that we've been willing to bring up.
Okay.
We've been looking at Thursday in particular, but nothing that.
Yeah, that's helpful. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I have thoughts on permit, but I'll let Bill and Athiya start.
No, I'll just echo one thing Mike said earlier that I agree with, that I want to avoid having a year where we really jump up in any sort of charges. That happened with water and sewer, I think, in a way that we're still living with. So if we can avoid it with the transfer station, I think that's best for everybody.
Yeah, we know what our disposal fees are. That's locked in for the next three years, Leanne?
Well, two more, probably, right?
No, we're twenty-five.
Oh, no, you just started a new one in.
Twenty-five to twenty-eight.
Yeah.
This is the first year of it.
We know what our recycle costs are gonna be, that's a fixed cost. So we know what the big numbers are.
Yeah, well, if we can plan for that and just have kind of like smaller increases in our fees.
Yeah, it's the, when you go out to bid for a disposal contract, you go wildly different. That's, so I don't foresee a big jump in the next three years.
Okay.
Two questions, which I'm just gonna say, so I don't forget them. Any change to, now that we've started doing cardboard separately, in how that's impacting recycle costs?
Nothing we're prepared to speak to tonight, but, you know, we are getting two full bins out per week that, you know, essentially paying a zero, zero cost on that. Leanne and I can delve deeper into that.
It's only been two months since we started doing, or three months.
Yeah.
It feels like such a long time.
I know, doesn't it?
In terms of the capital fee, I don't know who this is a question for, but in terms of the capital fee, is that, did we project that to increase over time or to decrease over time? How is that?
There was a ten-year bucket of money and there was a thirty-year bucket of money. So my understanding is when the ten-year bucket of money was paid off, that that portion of the capital.
If we don't have another capital expenditure. That's part of the SLAC board assessment, though. Is that what you're asking, Athiya, who controls it?
Well, so we had last year a capital fee of sixty-three dollars. So the total cost was three hundred and forty dollars for the sticker, but that was the transfer station fee plus the capital fee. And I'm just trying to remember if there was a projection to that capital fee of.
It's there for a while.
Ten years, I believe.
Or if it's sixty-three dollars for.
It's, it's, it's the ten-year straight line, but then, but then there's the whole CSF money coming into this as well. That's the thirty-year debt you're referring to? It's, so in theory, it would go away, but the fact of the matter is you likely are gonna have another set of capital expenditures behind it, right? Because that was, Mike or Michelle, that was issued as general operating debt, the sixty-three dollars with that servicing, off the operating budget, I believe.
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
So that's why, like, so we, I think we're just kind of calling it that. It's frankly, just, it's just general operating debt, so.
We're tagging this to the funding source for it, that's all.
Yeah, exactly, it's just.
Yep. So Paris, you want to go?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, I mean, I, I just want to confirm a couple of things, which is, because I know that I have questions, but on the residential side, we have last year's fee, which we didn't change. I actually think with some additional revenue, we could hold steady or even go down five or ten bucks this year. I think if we kept the pilot, I think you've got, you're gonna increase your mattress. You've got, and recycling is, you know, ten thousand dollars a month. I mean, that's, that's two bucks a permit, right? Forty-seven hundred permits if you're getting ten thousand dollars of net revenue. Like, you could easily save five or ten dollars just on new revenue. You have a thirty thousand dollar bucket here and a forty thousand dollar bucket there. So we'll decide that as a board. But on the commercial side, any volumes are about consistent, I assume, in the commercial? I mean, this is all just, you know, revenue straight up, but are we seeing any changes? One-day permits, any increases in that? Are you turning people away?
We did have a vendor that was remodeling the rehabilitation center right in front of it, the.
Oh, on Swanton, down the street?
Yeah, so our June and July construction waste coming in was high. They were running a dumpster multiple times a day.
Okay. So do you have any recommendations for us then on the residential permit, the commercial permit, commercial haulers of those three types? Do you have recommendations you want us to consider tonight?
Not for the permit fees, no.
Okay. Do you have other recommendations that you're holding?
Well, we had other recommendations for, you know, increasing some of the fees.
Okay.
But I, I just want to caveat this, that there is a group in town who has a presentation they want to make to the board.
You're kind of the state of the town group?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, you know, I don't want to overstep them.
It all comes to this table, so I don't think you're overstepping anybody, but we'll have to compare and contrast. But if you want to go ahead, Bob, I don't know if you, if you want to say that out loud or hand it off to us, but.
No, I mean, if we were talking rates, we're looking at, you know, because of our, our rates for our disposal and for our recycling has gone up with the new contracts, we're looking at a five percent increase on commercial fees for, for waste and for recycling, so.
Five-dollar fee on recycling, five percent on waste.
Right.
Right.
Yep.
So commercial fees would go from one seventy-five up to a hundred and eighty-four. And then the commercial recycling would go from one fifty-five to one sixty.
Mattresses presumably.
Thirty-five.
We had talked about going from twenty-five to thirty-five, but I know there's some discussion you had to go to fifty, I mean.
I might be landing back at thirty-five, we'll decide. Can you give me those numbers again, Bob, for the before and after on recycling and the first one?
Yep, commercial fee go five percent from one hundred and seventy-five dollars to one hundred and eighty-four dollars.
And I'll caveat that as well, that we have four waste strings that are all trash, that we should probably evenly apply that five percent to. The residential, commercial, the, the commercial waste, which is effectively just the Winchester Hospital, commercial hauler household, commercial mixed and construction and demolition. Those all, those all have different rates. Our, our thought would be that since we had a five percent increase of the incinerator, we pass that.
The, the, the commercial residential piece is by far the largest volume in those numbers you just gave us, right? What is the fee there?
One seventy-five a ton.
So it's the same as the commercial hauler? Okay, so you'd say that would all go to one eighty-four?
Yep. The commercial mix is currently two hundred a ton, the construction demolition is two thirty-five a ton.
So those would all go up to five percent.
Yep.
Okay.
And the recycling go one fifty-five to one sixty?
Yep, to our higher hauling cost with wind waste versus Republican.
And again, that's, that's for all, that's not just for these two commercial haulers. That's for all, for commercial residential for everything.
Okay, so go ahead.
Leaves, we haven't had a increase in, in five years, or yard waste, I should say, which is leaves and grass. Currently fifty dollars a ton. We were advocating for a five-dollar increase to fifty-five to help with the, our hauling cost that we, the material that we take off-site, Landscape Express and Wubert closed, so we've had to find outlets further away to haul excess material.
Sorry, Nick, what's the current fee?
Fifty.
Fifty.
Thank you, Leanne.
Anything else in the back of that piece of paper?
Well, mattresses from twenty-five to thirty-five.
Yep.
Minimal scale charge from fifteen to twenty-five.
So I will caveat that as well. I recently had a, not recently, over the summer, had a conversation with a colleague of mine who runs a commercial transfer station. And he has a minimum scale charge of a hundred dollars. He loves to see. he has a minimum scale charge of a hundred dollars. He loves to see those pickup trucks come in because that's his highest margin. Uh, you know, they may in fact only have ten, fifteen, thirty dollars a waste, but it's a hundred-dollar minimum charge. And we got into a discussion about, you know, why aren't I raking people over the coals like that as well? I don't know as a, you know, municipal transfer station if that's, that's our goal. Um, and I think it disproportionately hurts the, you know, person with a pickup truck. Uh, we have a, um, real estate company that comes in that has a small trash roof. They're consistently a fifteen-dollar charge, a couple landscapers, because it's only a fifty-dollar charge now. If it's a light fluffy load of leaves, fifteen-dollar minimum charge.
Yeah.
That, you know, the minimum charge.
What was your idea? Take it to twenty-five, you said?
Fifteen to twenty-five.
Yeah, I was just caution about, you know, really raising it, because I don't know if that's.
I mean, I looked at that as well. I think I sent this to you last week. It was like, you know, we were at fifteen for the scale. Just Needham's at thirty to fifty bucks, Welster's at thirty bucks, Webster's at thirty-five bucks. So we're trying to get to fit twenty-five.
Yep.
Not to a hundred.
Right.
And not to fifty. That's kind of market rate. Would you like to say something, Mr. Nowell?
Well, I just, uh, just to tell how that might affect me. So that's, that scale, that's uh, minimum scale.
You can go on up to the table if you'd like, grab a chair.
So it's kind of on the record a little bit.
Yep.
I'm, I'm George Nowell, um, precinct two. I'm a commercial hauler. I own Winchester rubbish removal and recycling, G R Nowell and Son. We're a company here in town. So how that, um, minimum would affect a commercial hauler like me, most of the time is at the end of the day, if I have a restaurant or someone calling me, they're like, I got to get this stuff out of here. So I say, I'll get it out of there, no problem. So you go, you pick it up and you go to the, you've got about two stops on there, you go to the dump and it's twenty-five dollars. But you say, oh, these are pretty good customers. It's a restaurant in town. I don't want them to have trash sitting there in town, sitting downtown in, in the alleys, that type of thing. So it sounds really good, but eventually one of those fees, I'm going to say, well, I'm a good guy, but I'm not a sucker. So you guys deal with your waste and I'll pick it up tomorrow when they open up. So it's just something to think about.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Sure.
I, I guess my view, we can continue to go through numbers, but get, like to share, yeah. So I think there's a lot of potential changes here, um, that you've proposed, uh, to specific fees. Um, and then there's potentially, what are we doing with the permit itself? The permit fee, you know, you said sort of ten thousand tons, standard ten thousand. Like, there's, there's just a few moving parts here.
Yep.
And then we also need to talk about that in the context of what the working group is coming back with. Because some of this is sort of now, right? A lot of their ideas are more medium-term. Um, I do think we probably could use, sort of seeing this all in one page or two pages, and, you know, here's the changes we're recommending, here's what we think it does to the transfer station's P and L, right? It's a hundred thousand this year. If, if you were to factor in all the changes you're recommending, does that go to two fifty or does that stay at a hundred? Because we get some uplift in revenue, but then we also are going to get that increase in expense. So just to have a forecast of what we think next year looks like. And then I think a view on what, whether you want to recommend or do you leave to the board, what you think residential permit fees should be. I, 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 I guess I maybe felt with being in the meeting, like, we, we might be willing to move on stuff today. I'm personally not, because I would like to see it in one, all in one spot.
That's fine. The only concern I have is, do we know, Steve or Patty, when does Marielle need to get our permit fees nailed down? Because these will get sold in January.
Yep. She would like it tonight.
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 So that's why this had.
Next Tuesday.
Just on the permit fee.
The residential permit fee. Or.
Meeting again Monday as well.
We are meeting again Monday on the twenty-seventh.
I mean, can you just, like, all the changes you, you just went over, if we were to implement all of them, let's say.
Yep.
Scale charge, increasing all those, uh, those fees by five percent, the recycling fee by, by five dollars, and then the mattress fee. I mean, those are the ones I got.
Yep.
What does that net us?
Give me a couple of minutes.
I, I generally.
You want a memo and, and write.
No, no, I, I, we, if we don't have time for memo, we could just problem solve.
I mean, I've got, I've got scale charge on mattresses right here. It's twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Just those two things.
So I'm trying to guess, is it like a hundred? Is it like two hundred?
Yeah.
I mean, the only thing, you know, you know, a short memo, it helps us is just continuity year over year to have that there and.
Documented.
To see what.
Yep.
How we made our decisions and, you know.
Absolutely.
Especially if we're changing up and things happen, so.
You know, we sell, we sold forty-seven hundred and twenty residential first vehicle permits. So if we, if we have ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars in additional incremental revenue from mattresses, cardboard and clothing, for every five thousand, you know, like, every five thousand.
Each dollar is five grand.
Yeah. Each dollar is five grand that we could take off the fee. So a two seventy-seven base sticker could be two sixty-five. Now twelve dollars or ten dollars rather easily.
Maybe the underlying principle.
Making these changes.
Behind what you're saying. Michelle was like, when you look at these fees, we're actually below market in a lot of them, and you guys are encouraging us to move them. Our residential sticker fee is, I couldn't find a higher one in the state for what it's worth. So I do think that, um, I'm not like, unless we really needed to, I'm not particularly interested in moving that number, um, because I do think there's other ways we can, we can generate the revenue. Um, and I know we froze it last year, which I think was, was, was good. Um, and to Michelle's point, if there's maybe even a little bit of relief you can give.
But those other sticker prices on the communities, you got to figure out how they're coming up with them. I know some of the other stations I've done in the past, the tax rate is paying for the majority of it.
That is exactly what it is.
Absolutely.
They're putting it on.
Here, we're, we're, you know, the sticker price is paying for.
Yep.
Absolutely. And that's, that's just a policy perspective.
Right.
Which is important for us as a SLAC board to consider, which is.
We're an enterprise front light.
Right, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I'd just like to point out, if you want to look at the elasticity of sticker prices, because when we had this conversation last year, I was like, I think that's too high and people aren't going to, uh, there was a difference in negative two.
Yeah.
Of first stickers and actually an increase of five and second.
But we froze last year, right?
Yes.
So, I'll eat my hat.
I wouldn't recommend going down just because that pricing keeps going up.
Yeah.
I think the only way we could go down is if we had the view that we were going to take some other source of money, whether it's the property tax or, um, additional revenue from the commercial side and sort of permanently infuse it in.
Right.
And so we're not going to sort of, we're going to sort of change how we're funding it structurally.
Mm-hmm.
So the five percent increase on the four waste streams is thirty-seven thousand five hundred, based on today's totals.
That's including the recycling?
Not including the recycling.
That's thirty-seven. Michelle got twenty for the mattresses and other things. So, so I don't know. We're, we're somewhere between fifty and a hundred.
Yep.
Yes.
That's it, yeah.
Okay.
I, I was looking at it more of, you know, if there's anything that we could throw to reduce that, uh, the capital fee, you know.
The sixty-three dollars.
We could put money toward that too.
Yeah, that, I think, putting, pushing that down a little bit is, is helpful.
To get that ten-year bucket of money faster.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and, you know, that would essentially decrease, you know, the.
Pay down the debt faster?
For.
Pay more debt?
They're placed, they're placed bonds. There's no way to prepay them.
Okay. So I don't, so I'll, I will talk to Marielle and tell her we'll have an answer for her next Monday, which is still going to be in October, but not tonight. And if you could get us that and a quick table and with that back of the envelope, Nick.
Yep.
And with Mr. Nowell's, you know, concern about the scale fee, um, you know, take it into account and noted. But it'd be helpful to see that annualized.
Yep.
And Leanne, I think to the, the best extent that you can with the P and L on, uh, annualizing out, you know, cardboard for a year, right? Textiles for a year. We definitely have some seasonality, um, that, you know, you didn't have as much maybe in June, in July, August, people are away. So if you could just give us an estimate of like, it's running about this per, per month.
Okay.
You can look at it for the year, and that'll help us. I might be the only person saying we should put the sticker down. I understand, Bob, the point that our costs go up, but we're finding some additional sources of revenue that just weren't there when we negotiated these fees. You know, cardboard wasn't free when we were setting this rate two years ago, and textiles weren't getting bought by people when we set this fee two years ago either. We suddenly have revenue streams that we didn't have, even with the new contract to haul our, our trash off, so.
So, so Michelle, but you're, I'm not sure that's true. So, so, because Mike, you were just saying the sixty-three dollars, you're open and we're using that? Is that?
Yeah.
Capital side.
But, but that, but it's the three forties, the, so if it comes out of the sixty-three, the residents are going to see a cut anyway, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Correct.
So I'm not, when you said you're, you're the only one saying that, I'm not sure that's true. Because I, I, I think there, and Mike said he's interested in the capital fee. I don't know.
If we're, if we're, if we have excess revenue of a certain percentage and we see that there's additional revenue coming in, you know, and.
Predictable additional revenue.
Predictable, you know, then, you know, maybe it can be just reducing that sixty down to whatever. So, you know, whatever it is, I, I don't have the numbers in front of me, so.
But we have predictable increases too on our waste stream under contract, so that'll be going up next year as well. So just.
Roughly four percent.
Yeah.
And where I am is, just to state my, like, the whole working group's concept there is what can we generate from additional, um, additional commercial, but also should this just be enterprise light or should we be taking a slightly different view of it? And I, they've certainly convinced me that, that potentially we should. So I, I think I'm open to, to try and see what we can do here in terms of maybe taking a bit off of our residents, whether that's the capital fee or the basic.
And I, I wanted to communicate it as a capital fee because that is something that we just started, you know, a few years back, right? That was, you know, a new assessment that caught the eye. People really pushed us, you know, over, um, you know, three hundred, which was, you know, a pretty substantial, um, increase. And I remember, you know, uh, first year in the board, we, it was at one ninety-five or something like that. And we, um, one of the members wanted to decrease the permit fee from one ninety-five to one ninety, right? Thinking people would be jumping for joy and, you know, praising us. Of course, nobody said anything because it was such a, a small increment until the next year, when we had to then go over two hundred to two forty, right? So that's, that's the flexibility of the permit fee itself. The capital fee is static, right? So that's why I was more interested in kind of hitting that number. But.
All right, so.
No sense.
We're going to have to be in good, quick decision mode next Monday to get these, depending where we're going to shift it, right? It's going to be a, for us, SLAC board, a shift toward capital or reduce the permit fee. Where do we land with these recommended? We need to be in decision-making mode.
Can we vote to extend the pilot program tonight? At least get that done, if that's.
Are people comfortable doing that? I am.
Could, could we extend it to up to five, you know, haulers as well?
Why don't we say, uh, up to five haulers, up to ten thousand tons and extend it indefinitely?
Yeah, second.
And it's not pilot anymore?
It's not a pilot. So I, I, I move that we convert the commercial hauler pilot into a commercial hauler program with the restrictions that we do not use in aggregate more than ten thousand tons of our permit capacity. Uh, we do not have more than five commercial clients. Uh, and, yeah.
And that's it?
And otherwise continue the restrictions we've already put in place.
Yeah, I, I think the ecosystem we have with our in-town, you know, haulers are, is important to preserve, you know?
Yeah.
They're our largest customers.
Did we, um, put a condition on that, that, you know, that, that we try to have those, um, from the pilot be local haulers? I, I don't remember what we did last time. I thought we had said something about that.
Anyone was invited to apply.
Okay.
But we didn't limit it. And we also had a non-compete, like, no, well, no raid clause, that they can't be poaching existing customers as well. That was in there.
That's what I remember, okay.
Can't solicit the customers.
Cancel list, can't poach, whatever language we had.
We found it very difficult to get trash collectors in, uh, you know, once they reach a certain size, it makes more sense to go straight to a preparation facility.
So it could be a, a junk disposal type thing?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's the motion.
Second.
Okay, that's the second. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so you can communicate that, Nick, to these two partners.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the data.
We'll get to them now.
Appreciate that. Okay.
Yes, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up, planning board. And Bill, I know you want to be mindful of time, so I think after planning board, we might jump five and six and go to town council and then come back around, but we'll see where we are with the agenda. Okay, Mr. Vinalia, go right ahead.
Brian Vinalia, uh, Chair of the Planning Board.
How are you?
Nice to meet you.
Have you not met Steve? Steve?
Met in passing around.
Yeah.
Okay.
But.
I should make more intros, I'm sorry.
That's great, all right.
I will be really quick. I promise I'd be quick. Uh, we have Article Four before the town meeting is to make a small change in our MBTA three A overlay district by law. I think everyone at this table, almost everyone at this table, has seen me before you at least twice asking for money regarding this, so I don't need to give you all of the background. But in 2024 Springtown meeting, when we passed the overlay district, we were unable to support with an economic feasibility analysis, the full amount of inclusionary housing that we wanted to have in that district. Um, and I have three slides that I sent out and then they thankfully got printed because they didn't get maybe included in the packet somehow. When we passed the, um, we have, there's three districts of the planning board as the, um, special permit granting authority for Center Business District, the Main Street Mixed Use District, and the MBTA Overlay District. And our goal is to have it so that, um, any development of six or more units has ten percent affordable at the eighty percent AMI level. Um, and if you have more than twenty-five units, that you also have an additional five percent affordable at a hundred and twenty percent of AMI. Now, the trick was, we were unable to support the way we rounded this number. The numbers in the MSMD and CBD round down if they're up to point or nine. So if, I have an example on page two of this that you'll see. Um, and if it's a point five or above a fractional unit, it rounds up. For the MBTA Overlay District, we were limited to ten units and above because of what the economic feasibility analysis that we had at the time, and all fractional units had to round down. So if you go to the second page, there's two examples. In the Main Street Mixed Use District or the CBD, um, parts of which overlay the, uh, the same area, um, if you had ten percent of nine units, a nine-unit development, you'd end up with point nine and you'd round that up to one affordable unit. If you're in the MBTA three A Overlay District in that area, you'd have nine units and it would be point nine and it would round down. And in fact, you wouldn't have any to begin with because it starts at ten.
It starts at ten, so it's zeroed out to the end with.
It's zeroed out for two reasons. It's zeroed out because we started ten, but the reason we started at ten was because it wouldn't make any difference if you started at nine.
But at fifteen, it would go to two versus one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. No, at, at fifteen, yes. At fifteen, it would go to two versus one.
Yep. Yep.
And then the second example I hear is just one with 35 units, which is maybe more like what we might see downtown Winchester or something like that. You'd get three and a half units, which would round up to four affordable units. And you'd get two of those 120% AMI workforce units, whereas in MOD, you would get three and one. So you'd really lose two affordable-ish units, even though one is not technically affordable. So on the last page is just what we're proposing to do. It's really simple. The text of article, which now we know is Article Four, is simply going to change 10 to 6.
Why did the MBTA, why did the 3A start at 10 and now we can do it to 6? Do they amend it?
So what we did is we had, we had previously commissioned an economic feasibility analysis.
Oh, it was our choice to do it at 10?
It was not our choice. The analysis was unable to support going down to 6. And we, it's complicated how we got there. And without
We needed to support the desire to move down to 6. We couldn't do it without
With additional data.
Yeah, we couldn't do it without economic feasibility report. Once we got that done, now we can justify.
Now we can justify, yes. And the scaling, the rounding up versus down.
Just made up hoops. That's all.
So.
Made up hoops. So we jumped through them.
But it was our, my point is, the state law doesn't require it to be at 10. The state law allows us to do it at 6.
If we get, if we get an economic feasibility analysis, we could do it at any number if we can support it. And the idea is to show that it's economically feasible for a developer. So they won't come in and say, well, no development here because you've made it too hard. So that's why we're required to do this. And what's convenient is that we've already run both this change and the economic feasibility analysis that we have by EOHLC, who makes the decision on whether it's acceptable. And they said, yeah, that's great. You'll stay in continuous compliance if town meeting passes that. And we passed it by the Attorney General's office and they pre-approved the changes. So basically, we are asking town meeting to make two really small changes to bring all three of these districts into simultaneous, whatever, matching.
Alignment.
Alignment. That's, thank you. That's the word I was looking for.
There you go.
So that somebody won't pick and choose a district, even if they overlay it on top of each other, they could pick and choose, say, well, I want that one because I will have to make one fewer affordable unit. So.
And that's happened to us before as well in the Center Business District when somebody's, you know, had made that choice. And it's, you know, so we've been kind of correcting some of these things over the years. So it, it happens in, in the market.
And we would like, it's also easier for, well, it's easier for development per to put in fewer affordable units. But it's also easier for them to have one set of guidelines so they know, this is what I have to do if I'm in any of this area, Center Business District, up Main Street, this is what I have to do. So that's what I came to do.
Build half the building under this code and build the other half of the building under that code. I mean, it would just be crazy. You could literally split parcels with different zoning laws, especially on Main Street.
And there is a slide that you don't have that's going to be at town meeting, which actually shows an overlay of the MBTA 3A district and shows an oval over one half, which is in the Center Business District, and an oval over another part, which is on the Main Street Mixed Use District. So that if you're in either of those ovals, you can choose which zoning you want and you can look at the two different requirements, say, which one can I make more money on?
Yeah.
Which is not what we want. We want them to ideally use the underlying zoning unless they really want to use the MBTA 3A. I mean, that's why we made the underlying zoning more compelling. But this is one area where MBT3A is more compelling right now for making money, not for our best interest.
Okay. Any questions for Brian? I was thinking if we, if we do or don't have questions, which we can do, we could even vote a position on this for select board. We could vote a select board's position on this article. I think we have maybe, we're missing two slides, but we have the gist of the presentation. So if we're ready tonight, we can vote a position. Not right now, but before we have Mr. Vinalia leave.
I'll be happy to support it. I, you may get the question, not from me. Why not make, why not make the, the Main Street and CBD match MBTA 3A, given it's harder to develop right now, period? So just be
I mean, that's, that would be going, it would be going backwards in our goal to meet our, you know, affordable housing SHI.
Sure.
I mean, it certainly would be harder, as it is.
I, I think you'll have to defend it more on, we actually strongly believe that it's still, it's still feasible for an eight-unit building to be at, you know, 10%. That, I think that's, it's, because everyone agrees we want more SHI. But if somebody would say, well, is there a reason we set it at 10? And I think the answer is your economic analysis that shows that an eight-unit building can, can actually do 10%.
So we actually fall behind. If you round down, we fall behind because we, we're trying to get to 10%. And if somebody builds a 13, even just a 13-unit development with one affordable unit, we're actually further behind after that's done than we started.
That's if, that's if the unit gets built.
No, no, I know. It's a good, it's a good question.
Yeah.
I will internalize it. But the point of the economic feasibility analysis is to show that it is affordable.
That's the point. I mean, I think you, you have to explain why to, again, not to me, but.
And when you say puts us behind, you're talking about kind of the numerator or the denominator and, you know, it's, yeah.
We add 13 units.
My favorite topic.
I have 13 units, but only one is affordable.
Right.
And you're trying to get to 10%, that's a losing proposition. If you do that all day long, you lose.
Yeah, yeah. Pushing the goalposts out for you.
Watch us go.
So happy to support it. Also, just to mention, we, we had the same discussion in the Housing Partnership Board the other night and they unanimously supported it as well. So it's, Brian's been, been on the road and it's been positive feedback.
Thank you.
And it's a pretty simple concept. So.
If I don't go to all of you, then town meeting happens and someone says, why didn't you come to all of us first?
Well, it's a two thirds vote. I think it's a good idea.
It should just be a majority vote.
Majority? It's not a zoning bylaw amendment?
Well, because it's, yeah. State changed the threshold. I think it should be just simple majority. But, you know, we can open up our motions.
I would expect it's a majority because it's increasing affordable.
Affordable housing goals, which are a simple majority.
Law that passed a couple of years ago.
Yeah, yeah. Good point.
Okay. Does anyone make a motion? Any questions additionally? Or we could make a motion to support?
That we vote favorable action on?
Article Four.
Article Four.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Do you want me to quickly go or stay here?
Paris, you want to talk at all about 33 Mount Vernon Street?
Yeah, it's a, I, I have been following the project, as have a number of you, potentially all of you, for, for a long time. I, I think the, the project has gotten to a, a good place and it meets goal number one of the Housing Production Plan that the Select Board and the Housing, sorry, the Planning Board have, you know, created and, and have got approved this year by the state, which is to create additional diversity of housing. We, we obviously have been doing a lot on affordable housing as a town, two projects delivered, two projects in the pipeline. And there's more, more to diversity, you know, high-quality ownership housing that people who are seniors in our town could, or, or just empty nesters can downsize into is a massive area that our Council on Aging, our Age Friendly Winchester Survey that was done between them and the Planning Board has highlighted. I, I believe Housing Partnership has highlighted, or at least members of it have highlighted. So I had prepared a letter to the Planning Board to say that, you know, my view was that this would be a great addition for those reasons and that it would add important housing diversity. I shared that with Michelle, just as the chair is the heads up. She said, would you put it in front of the board? So I, I think it's a good idea too. And I think we agreed if a majority of this board or even another member of this board wanted to sign it with me or including tweaking language, that would be welcome. I did share that with Brian by phone last week. And I think you're open to us providing a, a select board opinion on this. I know Council on Aging is also going to be sending you a letter too. So if the board, if any other members of the board or a majority of it would like to sign, you have the copy of the letter and the logic for it. That would be great. If not, understand.
I'd just add that we welcome recommendations from all boards and committees in town, especially the Select Board.
Okay.
So the only question I have is just from when the assessors were in tonight. They mentioned most of the condos are
Under 100,000? No?
Well, the median.
Below median. And so in, you know, considering, when we talk about diverse housing opportunities, combined with, you know, opportunities for seniors to be able to downsize is, is just aligning that those are downsizing size, sort of downsizing versus, you know, luxury expensive condos.
I, I think they are going to be nice condos. And I think that's what a number of seniors want to, they want to move into a high-quality ownership, you know, product in the, in the town center. I, you know, I don't, I don't know what the luxury means, but average, average single-family home in this town is well over $1.6 million. And so to buy a $1.2 million, I don't know exactly if you even have a view on the pricing. No.
We do not have the unit breakdown.
Right.
Sizing or cost.
These are, I don't think these are going to be like affordable with a capital A, right? I mean, there's subset of them will be by, you guys are negotiating that. But this is a product we are, in my judgment, very light on. And the Housing Production Plan's first goal, as I wrote in the letter, is diversity broadly defined. Again, my opinion, others, I, I, I don't, Michelle, I want to turn this into like the Planning Board's debate on this.
Nope. We do not want to.
Yes.
Do we want to endorse sort of Paris's position, which is, I mean, the Select Board did co, we signed off on the Housing Production Plan with the Planning Board. Ownership opportunities in addition to rental opportunities is a need. And I think that's sort of the gist of Paris's letter, which is if we want to be consistent and show some support for that, we can do so. And Planning Board will have their hearing and decide on the merits of the project. I don't want to undersell it if that sounds about right.
My memo and the letter light it out. So you can see my arguments. If you agree with them, great. If not.
If people want to talk about that now, or we can let Brian go and we can debate it, take it up later. But I think we need to make a decision tonight regardless, because you have a hearing tomorrow?
We have a hearing tomorrow.
So if we're trying to deliver any message, we should decide that tonight.
Would be helpful. It's unclear whether we will take a vote tomorrow.
What's the score?
I was just going to say, obviously, I'm not going to debate the, outside of our public hearing.
Nope.
But I wanted to just make sure that whatever recommendation you make, it would be helpful if you're clear. Are you recommending that the design as presented, which has commercial spaces here and here, has this many parkings? It'd be helpful to know, are you recommending in principle, a development there that's six stories tall, that has this number of unit? Like, I just, it would be helpful to know what you're recommending. Because if it's just a generic, and I don't mean just a generic, that was a pejorative. If it's, we want some development there, this looks good, that's helpful. But it's also would be helpful if you understand that, if we can understand if you're recommending it be six stories, not five. Or if that, if you don't care how many stories it is, it's not a recommendation, just that something go there. So, because we've spent months talking about very small details in this development. And so I just want to understand what you're recommending, you know, in the end of the day.
I'm going to invite Paris to make a, a motion to define what it is we're recommending.
I, I provided a completed draft of a two-page letter. You can, everyone can read exactly what's in it. And, and it does not opine on height, but it does say that I believe it satisfies the conditions of the PUD, which allows you to go over 40, either eight or nine feet. The exact number of feet can be determined by the Planning Board. I, I, you know, I don't know if the Select Board has ever weighed in on project height of a specific project that's not in a, a lip or on the town-owned land. So I, I did think that was more the Planning Board's decision. But to say, this is, you know, a product we don't have for a variety of reasons, our seniors are really asking for this, and, and empty nesters, not, many of them are not even seniors, we're short on it. It does satisfy therefore the criteria of the PUD in terms of diversity. And you should take that into account as one board's opinion. That doesn't, we're not, I, I am not saying this is how I would vote if I were a member of the Planning Board, you know, maybe in two and a half years I'll run for the Planning Board and I can do that then. But until then, it's just giving you the part that we care about as the Select Board.
Absolutely. And that's all, all I want, that's the only reason I ask that. And I'll go let you guys talk among yourselves. Just be clear on what this letter, which I did not see, whether you're recommending it in principle or specifically this one that you like, that you like this, just so we know what you're recommending.
You didn't actually see the letter. So apologies. I just gave it to the board.
So, so just to clarify, Brian, the, the, maybe, I'm reading your words. So if it's incorrect, let me know. But
Reading them, it should be a accurate representation of my opinion.
I respectfully ask the Planning Board to weigh the age-friendly and community stability benefits as you evaluate the proposal and in determining whether this proposed development creates diverse housing opportunities for our town's residents. So it's not us taking a position, but saying, you know, this, the hope is that you will consider X, Y, and Z in your analysis.
That's perfect.
Mike, are you going to comment?
Yeah, I, I'm, you know, supportive. You know, I, I do think the, and certainly we'll vote to, to sign on or whatever we're doing. But just process-wise for us, I am uncomfortable with just the, we seem to be getting in this habit of just like bringing letters to support to the board with things that we haven't really deliberated or noticed on. And I think there are things that we need to discuss around it. And I don't, I don't love just telling other boards and committees like what to do if they are, you know, elected boards, but certainly supportive, you know, of what we're doing here. But I, I do, that, it seems to be a, a trend. And I'm just, I'm concerned about it because it takes away some of our, our visibility and some of our publicly deliberative process. And so, but I'm supportive of the project. I'm supportive of the letter. So I'm happy to move forward on it. But I just wanted to raise that concern.
What was the concern about notice and public deliberation?
Just that the, if we haven't talked about this project in particular on our agenda before, we're just writing a letter around a recommendation, right? So I think there are certain things that I would change in letter, there's certain things that I would have included that aren't there. And then there's certain questions of, I want to hear from the Planning Board if they want a letter, right? So I don't want to stick our nose where it doesn't belong. So I just think, you know, this is the second kind of letter that we've, we've gotten. And I'm just, I, I'm just, just worried that we're, we're creating a new process of letter writing. And then there, you know, we're, because it's, things are around our objectives, you know, I feel compelled to, to support them.
But that's the key. We're weighing in on specific objectives of the Select Board. We're not weighing in on height. We're not weighing in on zoning issues. We're weighing in on a, on a narrow criterion that lines with the Housing Production Plan that the Select Board signed and has Michelle's signature on it. That was submitted in 2025.
I think, Mike, I, I agree with that. And I think Mike has a valid concern. I think about time anyway, or us to be able to have a chance to process. So I think it's fair. I also realize this was, you know, something that only was able to get to us last week for, for this evening. We hadn't had it on our radar. But I think we are supportive. But I think it's fair. If we, if we, if any of us have the thought to opine on upcoming zoning meeting or con-con meeting or Planning Board hearing and think we should get behind it, maybe we should try to socialize it a little bit sooner. And I could have called the state, well, I couldn't have called State of the Town last Friday because two of you weren't even around. So we would just, it just got a little bit caught up with time. But we can try to get meetings in more cycles at least to socialize that any one of us has a strong position that they'd like us all to get on board with. I think that's fair. I think the letter's good. I also think it's fair. So we can try to do a little better. Doesn't mean we won't sign this.
I don't agree with the characterization that we are sticking our nose where it doesn't belong on this or the previous letter. The previous letter, which is a public document at this point, was referring to a modeling assumption that, that a Select Board body, the State of the Town Committee would, or the State of the Town Body, is using around a level services assumption. That is a squarely Select Board prerogative, as is the Housing Production Plan, which is a joint initiative of the Select Board and the Planning Board. So I, I strongly dispute that characterization.
Bye, Brian. Okay. Motion? Anyone?
I move that the Select Board adopt and sign the letter as proposed by Mr. Bani and communicate it to the Planning Board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And by the way, if anyone wants my opinion, I, I think this, this letter is strongly in our wheelhouse and I'm very comfortable with it. Thank you, Paris. I've been following this development as the Select Board representative to the Planning Board. But given that it deals with something that we are actually directly responsible for, you know, I have been very adamant where I think our lane begins and ends. And I think this is squarely within it. So I think it's part of our job as a Select Board. And I want to thank Paris for putting this letter together because this is the sort of leadership I think that we're supposed to be taking. I wish we had a little more time. I agree with that. I will always say that. But this is what we should be doing, I think, in creating records.
And we just did.
Yeah.
And thank you for writing it. Okay, let's, I'm going to jump State of the Town, Forest Ridge to get to town council discussion. So we have, Bill spent a lot of time, it sounds like on the phone, checking references for town council that we had in over the last Monday in September, first Monday in October. I don't know, Bill, if you want to summarize some of these references. And if the board is prepared to make a recommendation this evening, we can. Otherwise, I think we should try to make a recommendation at next week's meeting as to a preferred council. But if you want to take it from here, Bill, and summarize, we have some detail, but go ahead.
Yeah. So I hope you had some time to read it. You know, I was getting these up through the end of the day on Friday. So I apologize that you didn't get the notes prior to tonight. The, the good and bad news is the references were all pretty strong and positive for the people who were chosen to give references for their particular firms. One thing that maybe isn't captured in here is the level of enthusiasm some of them had. And I'll just say that some of these folks, particularly I think the individuals who work with Murphy Hesse and Harrington Heap were like weirdly exuberant about how much they loved their lawyers. And, you know, that, that was
That just made you jealous.
Yeah, kinda. But it, it, you know, they, they were, some of them were gushing. But they're all definitely qualified. I, I don't think there's anything, any way we can say anything other than that. So if there's a question about the, the references themselves, I'm happy to try to answer it. But otherwise, if we want to have a conversation about where we're leaning, I'm, I'm prepared to have that conversation.
Are people prepared to have
Sure.
a conversation either to create a shortlist or make a recommendation?
I'm okay with a recommendation.
You're okay with a recommendation, Paris? How do you feel about readiness to make a recommendation tonight? Or even just eliminate one and make a shortlist?
I, there were two I was between. I had a, so I guess I'm at least willing to eliminate one.
Okay. Anthea? All right, Bill?
I'm prepared.
Okay. Who wants to start?
I mean, I'll, I'll just take off from what I just said in a sense. I feel a lot more comfortable with Murphy Hesse and Harrington Heap. And a lot of that is based upon not just the references that I was given, but just looking at the firms and their sizes and, and other, other recommendations, references I've heard from people just in the profession. I think that for us, knowing what sort of client we are, those firms are better suited to really be partners. That was something that was very strongly repeated in all those references. And since we're very likely moving to an hourly basis, I think that we're going to be best served, both in terms of service and budget issues, with somebody who is more intimate with us, if that's, if that's the word I want to use.
intimate with us, if that's, if that's the word I want to use. And while I, I certainly believe KP Law has a lot of good credentials, I'm just always a little nervous with bigger firms, larger firms, especially where we want to be really keeping a close eye, both on what we're doing and what we're paying for. And I'm, I'm more confident that would happen with one of those two other firms. So I think that's where I would start the conversation.
Anthea? I'm going to go this way.
I think, I think we have three, it was a little bit easier than last time. We only had three, three firms to talk through. They're all, all very strong and I think could be, you know, beneficial toward, to us, but having, you know, agreeing with Bill on having that, you know, smaller firm that can create a partnership and, you know, just sort of skimming through what, what's here. You know, Charis North is, is clearly a very strong counsel, both in her, her presentation and in what's in the notes here. And I think Harrington Heap, when, when they were in, also seemed to kind of get the gist of, of the community as well, just in terms of like how we describe ourselves and how they would, how they would sync up with that.
Okay. I'm going to go last for a reason which Bill already knows, but I'll tell Mike. Mike, you go ahead and unpass.
Yeah, I, I think I agree with everyone here. You know, it's always a difficult decision for us because, you know, when we get these applications in, they're firms that are also really interested in working with us and they all seem like a good fit in a different way. I think what has been helpful over the years is really to, to focus in on who the, the principal is going to be, that's going to be dealing with us on a regular basis, you know, as well as their, their support staff. So I, I, I thought, you know, that, with that said, Murphy Hesse seemed to be, you know, a, a standout a little bit above the rest, although we would be well served by any of these, these firms and these attorneys.
Okay. Paris?
Nothing to add right now.
Okay. Steve, anything you want to say for the good of the order?
No.
That's fair. I don't blame you. I told Bill when we walked in after seeing how, you know, solid and positive all of these references were, that, I don't know that it helped us. I truly, I, ambivalent is, is not a, it's not a positive word, but I really don't, I think we would be well served by any of them. I kind of don't care. I, I do, I felt like each of the partners who came before us, I thought Donna Brewer as our primary was solid. I thought Charis was a superstar. I think I said that two weeks ago. Tom, I was a little bit concerned about in terms of maybe just, you know, being able to deliver and, and speak with authority because he was surrounded by people who were speaking with such authority, but the references prove that Tom's a solid lead attorney too. So I'm going to go with the will of the group on this one because I really, I don't think there's a bad answer in front of us, which is, it's a good problem to have.
But Bill, it's not to put you on the spot, but it strikes me that, you know, you've, you're a member of the bar, you've spoken to, you know, the references yourself, you know, it sounds like Mike had a view of Charis. Is that your view or, I know it sounded like you're between Harrington Heap and, and Murphy Hesse. So is it aligned with that, with, in terms of Murphy Hesse? Did you have more of a view on Harrington Heap?
I think going, going into it, you know, a, someone suggested to me independently that Harrington Heap would be a good fit for our, our culture. And that was before we interviewed anybody. And I think they definitely lived up to that. Looking at, having heard the references, you know, I think Charis has a little bit more direct town council experience than Donna, which makes it difficult. Because Charis does act as primary for Natick, which is kind of close to us. Donna's comparisons are not as, not as direct.
Was the comment you received specifically about Donna or just generically?
It was generic about the firm. And that could be, and that is an important question to ask, Paris, so.
Do you, I don't mean to jump ahead, Paris. Do you want Bill to make another phone call? Do you want to get some more data? Because we could do this on Monday? No?
Not particularly.
I just want to, because I think it's a fair point. There's a, you know, there's a firm or a guy named Hess who wasn't sitting in front of us, and if that was important, we could try to track that down.
Well, actually, having said that, again, I think that was a very good question because I think we really do appreciate, I think both of these firms have the benches that we need.
I think all three of them do.
I think all three of them do.
Yeah.
But we're down to the two.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. We are.
But I think we all also appreciate the, the importance of the primary and, and their ability to get up in front of town meeting and control that group and get its respect and, and move us how we need to move and, and do the same to us. And we've all, I think, identified Charis as somebody who we think is going to do that well. And so if the firms are both strong and we're comfortable with them, but we keep coming back and saying this one person's name over and over, maybe that's the indication that that's the way we go.
Anybody disagree?
No, the, the only other aspect that we have discussed a little bit is, is kind of the, the cost and billing. You know, I'm, I'm less, you know, convinced that that's a significant factor for me because we've tried so many different ways over the years and it just ends up being a lot, you know? It's.
Well, and litigation kills you. That's what we've learned.
Yes. Yeah. I'll add to that if you're done.
Yeah, I'm done, yep.
One of the interesting things, all of these references that I talked to, I also had conversations, how do you control your legal budget? And, and they are all much, I think, much stricter than we are.
Yes. Gatekeeping is huge.
Yes. So I think when, whoever we hire, we need to have a serious conversation about how we're going to interact and what the gatekeeping is going to be both ways.
And there needs to be messaging, and that's true of any one, any of these firms, is messaging from, you know, town hall, from town management to boards and committees and chairs. There's been a lot of open door, you know, office hours is one thing, wander in with your issue of the week.
Yeah.
But, you know, speed dial and phone calls.
Been a lot of direct contact from.
It's been a lot of direct contact for years.
Yep.
And that wasn't my experience before I joined the select board, just being an outside participant in other committees. But it has become the norm and we're going to need to, it's going to be a shift. And people may not like it, but it's, it's to everyone's benefit that they're focused on the true needs and priorities of us and management and not perhaps something that can wait. So I think that's, and that came through clearly in the references, Bill. And thanks for asking the question, so.
You know, I, I'm not close to this bar at all, but Charis served on the board of the incoming receiver Mount Law School. And, and I know some people who know her. For what it's worth, that one sort of reference from, you know, proper, very longstanding attorneys is that she is a person of very high aptitude and integrity. So that came back extremely positive.
And that's a law school that's well known for its environmental law program. So to the extent that we have to worry about that.
Okay, well, my, my little tally is right now, it was no votes for KP, two for Harrington Heap, three for Murphy Hess, with Mike Leeny more to Murphy Hess and Paris than I being like, so here we are.
I will make, I can make a motion.
Make a motion, go for it.
That we, I don't know what motion I'm making. Motion to enter into contract negotiations with Murphy Hess for the town council contract.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thanks, Bill.
Now.
I'm going to add one more fact that I didn't want to persuade anyone's vote. The Murphy Hess emails do not go into your junk folder.
Should have said that at the beginning. We wouldn't have had to have any of these interviews.
Because you've tested, because you've talked to some people. Look at that.
I, yes, as I was managing, as I was getting these references, managing this whole process over the past couple of months, I had to check my junk folder like all the time because not everybody, some of them were going that way and.
That's so funny. You actually said that in the interview, didn't you? Like, hey, get, get your stuff out of my junk. All right.
After, after, please, what do we do? What, who takes the charge on that?
Michelle, you'll reach out or, you know, yeah.
Bill and I?
Yeah.
And then we'll work on a contract with them. You can let them know and then you can throw it to me, Bill, or we can do it together. I don't care. But you can be the, you can be the deliverer of good news, I can do the bad news. Let, let's connect later.
So you should say yes to that.
I have, you know, I, I have, I did all the letters from the last time.
You can type them up.
So I can just switch in the names.
All right.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
For both of them and then.
Okay. This one town manager on the South Shore is going to be very disappointed because I got a call about KP, but that's okay. I'm just one person. All right, let's do article assignments and then maybe some positions. And I think we can scratch the Washington Swat and LDA because we're not quite, we're waiting for another amendment. There was a slight tweak, but, okay. So in front of you is this color coded matrix or Excel sheet with all the articles. We are at 37 for the fall. Consent agenda items are highlighted in yellow. And Anthea and I on Wednesday just went down the list and made some assignments on who's going to present. So starting with Article One, I'm going to start with typical Article One presentation. I'll introduce, you know, Steve, probably announce Murphy Hesse as a change in town council, do some high level police support articles and turn it over to Anthea, who's going to give a presentation on Human Rights Committee, or I make sure I don't get the right name, make sure I say it correctly. An overview as we discuss as a board, maybe, you know, getting some implementation, figuring out a charter, bringing it back to town meeting likely in the spring, but having a chance to socialize it to the actual audience that's going to approve it. And then, Paris, you're going to get five minutes. If you need seven minutes, let me know, but we're going to try to leave.
I think Phil, Phil, it's in the memo from the moderator that they're breaking out state of the town.
I didn't get a memo. Is it, is it in my junk folder? Oh, it's, it's in the envelope? I didn't open the envelope. Okay, what does it say?
That they're breaking out state of the town. So, so I think the, and I heard this only through passing at a TMMA meeting that, that we're like ships passing the night at, that just select board has too much for it. Plus, I think if Anthea's doing a piece, that it would be easier rather than trying to do that and extend, like we're all trying to cram into a 10 minute presentation, just break it out. It probably wouldn't even go a full 10 at that point, so.
That's fine.
But, but that, that's the way he wrote it here too.
That's fine. Okay. Anyway, that's you. So, all right, now jumping down then to town meeting time, Article 15. Mike, want to tee that up? And then I think study committee will be, so a study committee, study committee will be giving, Roberts Rule Study Committee will give a presentation under Article One. Peter Haley will be presenting it on the first night. They will have the recommendation. I don't know if it's in the packet, their written report or not, but they voted the written report, all the appendices last week. I attended their meeting. So this is for us to tee up that we were the ones to put on the warrant. And I thought Mike should tee it up since he served in that study committee. And then if the study committee wants to then answer questions, the town clerk, Mary Allen, is also prepared. Mary Allen's also prepared to come to the public hearing next week. Steve on this one, as are Mike and I.
The presentation there is, that was literally.
Hello, we put this thing and this is why. And you can hear, at this point, Tommy will have heard the Roberts Rules report. They will have seen, I think, the executive summary was what's going to be written or shared in writing with town meeting members. So, okay. Turning the page, Article 20, that's the Lynch Custodian. I'll take that. Article 21 is Solar. Paris, we gave that to you. Makes sense. Article 29 is Forest Streets, the Affordable Housing Trust. Mike, that's you. I spoke with Marty Jones, I know you probably did today as well. We should maybe split the time with the Affordable Housing Trust if that's going to be Chris. I don't know.
Yep.
But we, it's a co-sponsor with them. So if we want to tee it up, I asked Marty to have, I think she's out of the country, unless this is taken up on the 10th. So just connect with you.
Yep.
Or have Chris connect with you on the AHT. This is very much us giving it to them. We all put it on. We'd like them to have care and control. We'd like the trust to maybe talk about the work plan that they did at our request and their goals, so.
Yeah. And I, and I think it's what's been helpful for a few people to hear from us at our Affordable Housing Trust meetings and things that, that we, we want to pass this property.
Correct. We put it on the warrant.
Yes, we, because it's not just that we're being generous by putting on the warrant and that, it's that we don't see managing this property as, you know, what we do as the select board, but we do see it as what the purpose of the Affordable Housing Trust is, right? So.
Yeah.
That's, that is, that is the kind of only message probably to carry from us and then let the Chris or Marty take over from there.
And the other thing I mentioned to Marty on that one is, I don't know, we need to go back through the, the will and the estate and there's not, there's not going to build an ADU. The trust voted on that last week. There's no ADU getting built on this. It's just straight up renovation of that house. I think it's cleaner and we can recycle some slides from the spring. So you've got that. Then Anthea, Mystic School. See if, can you check with who the school, school committee, their, their lead on this? But I'd imagine we should present, we should, we'll give a recommendation, but we should try to get some time as well. And Paris and I have some details on rec or anything else if you need it. And then 31, 32 is Heroes Act. Bill, we're going to give that to you. It really is 32, you can present this one, presentation, but.
Yeah, my availability is going to be up in the air. I'm starting a trial on November 3rd and so.
I can always pick that up if Bill is, you know, it's at the end anyways, so.
It's at the end.
I spoke, already have, has spoken to him and he said he will be there.
Okay.
Okay.
And go up and do whatever.
Oh, good. I think it's helpful for people to hear from him as well because he does do quite a bit and I think a lot of people don't.
So that's likely the 10th, Bill? Do you think you'll know? That's, I think, I think it'll be the last night of the meeting. Don't you think, don't you think that'll be the 10th?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm probably, I should be done by then.
Okay.
Wait, no, the 10th is the.
Monday.
The Monday.
It's night three.
It's night three. I think it'll be the third night.
That's actually probably the worst night.
Can you let us know maybe by?
I, I won't know until the 7th.
Oh.
That's the way trials work.
So.
I probably won't know until the 10th to tell you the truth.
Okay.
So Mike is doing.
I'll, I'll be.
Or do you want it?
The understudy, I guess, if that's.
Do you want it?
No, go, go ahead.
Do you want it?
Discuss that in general.
I'm not, I'm not, no, we can discuss it. That's the point. I'm not going to be around on the 10th. You're not, you, I may not be available, so there's three of you. So rock, paper, scissors, go. But someone's going to take this and it will not be me and it's likely not Bill, so.
I am happy to take it. I'm happy to take it.
All right.
So I'm not doing it?
Nope. We'll give it to Anthea. Then Council on Aging, Parrish, you with the COA.
Yeah, Jennifer is not available. She had said that, that Nick can stand in with us. Nick Tracy was the.
On her board.
Other Nick.
Yep.
Who is her vice chair, who is the vice chair. We, we don't have, they are an official co-sponsor, so I thought it made sense for them to stand with us.
Yep, makes sense. Okay. All right. So Mike, you're going to stand up on two. I'm going to stand up, actually Article One and the Lynch Custodian. Okay. So two for you, two for, one for me, two for Anthea, two for Parrish. That's fair. Okay, so now let's vote positions. Are we prepared to vote positions then? We can hear the planning board report. Actually, let's do the consent agenda first.
I assume you mean the consent agenda of the town meeting.
The town meeting.
Motion to vote favorable action on the town meeting.
I did mean the town meeting. Then we're going to go through position. People want to take a minute and look at them, consent agenda items.
So we put OPEB and healthcare.
Yes. We asked that the moderator do that and he made that decision. Yes.
I'm ready to go on.
Just want to give people a minute to digest because it's a lot.
Is it like absurdly hot in here tonight?
It is.
Like I'm dripping.
It's really hot. I know, I was just.
I find it quite comfortable.
I don't know.
I, I, I'm fine with the consent agenda. If, I don't know if that was a motion by Anthea or that was just a.
Motion.
That was, I second.
It was a motion. It was a second.
Mike seconded, so I'll.
Any additional discussion?
And we can wait on it, too, if somebody needs more time, right? It's not a big, it's not a big deal. I mean.
Yeah, it's the consent.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Hear the report of the planning board, that'll come in. Zoning bylaw, we just did. Okay, actually, as we go down, this is the next piece of this, which is who, if we can't vote a position, who do we want to hear from and have into our meeting? So, Rangelie Park. Let's just skip that for now because we just got our things. Capital planning report. Capital projects, are people prepared to vote that tonight? Or do we need to hear from them or we can take it up on Monday? Capital is eight, nine, and 10.
I think they came in and I think it was actually, Farb Brian gave us a pretty exhaustive vote, do you?
Mm-hmm. Yes. We can wait until Monday, but does anybody want to?
Yeah, I'd like to wait.
Okay, we can wait until Monday, that's fine. Jumping ahead then, the next three are Gov regs. Sorry. Okay, the next three are Gov regs, 16, 17, and 18. They are having their hearing this evening. It's being recorded. I communicated with Lance today and we're hoping to get a link so we can actually hear it ourselves. Do, and Steve, Buck Sansky has offered to come in. Do we want to have him come in or do people want to watch the hearing and decide if we need him to come in on the 27th or on the 3rd? I'm not asking people to digest bylaw changes literally at the table, but do we want to hear from them or do you want to just watch it and, watch and learn?
I think watching and learning is fine. It's a busy time of the year for.
If it means anything, I sat down with Meredith Crowley on 16 and Karen Connolly on 18. Spent a couple hours with them, working through it.
We've kept hackneyed carriages, so about this.
Feeling pretty good about that. All right, let's just, I will just see if Steve is, is available on one of those nights. If we need him to walk in, if he can walk in on either the 27th or the first night of town meeting, but we're going to put ourselves responsible for watching the video and trying to get our questions answered that way. Okay. The next up is Concom has a bylaw amendment. Do we want to have Tracy explain that change? Do you want town council to weigh in on these, any of these bylaw changes as well?
I think the Concom one, I would like that because I remember.
Town council?
Spring, yeah, town council.
Yep.
Because in the spring, it was deceptively impactful.
Okay.
And I understand that they, that this is maybe not something.
I don't think it is, but it's just better safe than sorry.
Yep. All right. So we'll ask Jay to either dial in, but I think we expect to see him or somebody on the nights of town meeting. Okay, the next up is the Lynch.
Sorry, I agree. I'd like to hear more about it. Anthea, what was the point you made?
That it was less.
Yeah, 19.
Uh, I, I believe they had made some changes, so what was proposed at the last town meeting.
Less extensive.
Different, so it's.
Last time it, it was like a, I agree, it was like a much broader, like wild, like.
There was some change, yeah, sort of a small change that happened.
The section G, though, is still a really key question, that it, that, that to me is the key question. If we want to frame this for Tracy so she knows what we're trying to understand, which is how much does G grow the, the sort of jurisdiction, if you will?
Do we want to see if Tracy can come in next week?
I think maybe hearing from Jay would be.
All right, we'll start there. Parrish, do you want to hear from Tracy? Or do you want to hear from Jay first?
These bylaws.
We can start with Jay.
I mean, we're going to hear from Tracy on the floor of town meeting, assuming she's the proponent, right?
You could tell, you could tell Tracy that if she wants to come in, we're having Jay, you know, if she.
Yeah.
That, I mean, given her the option because. I, I don't think we should vote negative action, for example, without hearing from Concom.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, let's see. And so we will wait to vote until we hear from her. That's fine. The next up is Lynch Custodian. This is our article. Are we prepared to vote a position?
Yep.
Motion to vote favorable action on Article 20.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So, so do we skip Article 15?
Yes.
That's, that's meeting time.
Oh, we skipped town meeting time.
Well, sorry.
No, you're right. Thank you. I just jumped ahead.
Maybe we wouldn't take a position on this because.
I express my sole opinion on that, but the others.
I think we should, I think we should take a position to put it on the warrant.
Yeah, I don't know how we wouldn't really.
I'd like to see the appendix that's been drafted in the report from the study committee and.
Okay.
So you don't want to vote a position tonight?
Tonight.
I'm going to vote neutral, neutral action on this. As I said, when I voted to put it on the warrant, that we were doing that administratively as a, as a means of facilitating forward progress here, not as an endorsement of what our legislative rules for a legislative body.
Okay. I'll try to track down if that appendix, when it's going to be available for town meeting members. I think we should, oops, vote a position, but let's see where we land. Okay, next up is Solar. Parrish, this one is, do we need it to vote a position? Do you know where it's, what its fate's going to be yet?
I, I think it's, we're likely going to IP it.
Okay.
So, you know, probably at the floor.
Do you want to wait then?
We'll wait.
Okay.
I think we should wait.
All right, we can wait. Next up is the retirement board. We have, so we've not heard from the retirement board. We've heard from Stacy. She's given us a breakdown of what this COLA increase, what it means, what it means for our long-term pension liability. Do people have any questions for the retirement board?
I do not. I think Stacy answered the questions I would have.
Okay. Are people prepared to vote a position?
I am.
Motion to vote favorable action on Article 26.
Bill, are you okay on this one?
Yeah, we were talking about this.
Second.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm of the view that we, we went a very long time without increasing the COLA base. We, then we did raise it again more recently to, I think it's 16,000. This would be a proposal to increase it further. It adds about $1 million to our liability. You know, my view is we're in sight of fully funding this liability and we should get on sort of good, solid ground before we add what is a modest, but it is still a sweetener to the pension. Let's get it fully funded. We could always do this in a year. We're going through a state of the town and override process. I don't see this as something we have to do this year, so I would, I intend to vote negative action on it.
As do I. Mainly because it pushes out our pension obligation by about 15 months and the goal is to close it up in FY '27, first quarter of FY '28, and start to shift some of that toward our long-term OPEB liabilities, which only continue to grow. So, we can still take a position. We will take a position. But that's my discussion. Any additional discussion? I'll do a roll call vote.
The only thing I would say is, yeah, I'm supportive of it and will vote in favor of it. I, you know, I just feel like we're looking at two different policy objectives, right? Fulfilling by '27, you know, getting our liability fully funded and then also providing retirees with funds that I think that they deserve. So, you know, if, you know, we don't get to, from my perspective, we don't get to one policy objective kind of on the backs of someone else, right? So that's, that's where, that's my reasoning there, so. But I certainly understand the interest in closing that out in '27.
Okay, I'll do a roll call vote on this one. Anthea, you made the motion for favorable. I'll come back to you.
And we can wait, too, you know, again, on this one if it's.
We can wait. Do we need more information?
I'd like to think about it. It, it sounds like I'll be swinging the vote here, so. I'd like to see the impact it's going to have and how much, how quickly we can make it up if we do this a year from now.
Okay. Do you want to?
It adds about $1 million and change to our long-term liability. It pushes out our funding, our full funding about 15 months.
And that stays at that elevated level.
Normalized cost increase is, I think, is somewhere between $40,000 and $50,000 over the, you know, 30-year or whatever payoff period. So that's how much the increase would be in the.
Annual contribution.
Annual contribution.
Have we factored this into our?
No.
Okay.
Because it's not real yet.
And to Mike's point, the COLA only applies to, you know, $14,000 now and this would take it, I think, to 16. So, you know, the flip side of it, to state the other side of it, is, you know, retirees get a, you know, modest tens of dollars, it's not huge, increase in their, in their checks, just given there's inflation.
All right, let's punt it then. We'll come back. And Bill, if you need more info or find anything more from Stacy, please do share that around. We'll try to take it back up on Monday. Okay. Personnel board report will hear at the time. WCCP, do we want to have Christina in?
Yes, I think it would be good to have Christina in.
We'll see if she can come in on Monday.
Yeah, there, there was one thing that, that was raised to me, which is the, specifically on, on the Ginfield, Ginfield.
Pickleball?
Pickleball. Just the sound study and, you know, a concern about if we have that study back, will, will town meeting support the engineering work? So that was one. It would be good to have her opinion on because they did vote to fund 50,000, I believe, of, of engineering work. Yeah. And I think Nick is supposed to come in on Monday.
Oh, he is coming in Monday.
To.
Talk about this.
Talk about this.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's why I talked to you about, Michelle, and I.
Yep.
I didn't, Nick likes to email, but we did talk about it.
So we'll get Nick and Christina? We'll have Nick just talk specifically about Gin and pickleball?
Yeah, and I, I don't have really any objection to any of the, the recommend, the project recommendations on the WCCP. But I, you know, I have stated before, I, I am concerned about hiring a full-time position for the WCCP and something we probably should talk about at some point.
Okay.
Is that, just from an authority's perspective, do they have any, do they have the unilateral authority to do that or is that something that we would have?
To do.
Well, town meeting process is appropriate money, but in terms of to hire a clerk.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's up to 5% of your, you can use. They can put that straight on, on the warrant as, okay.
Yes. All right, so we have a few questions then for WCCP. We'll see if we can get Christina in and Nick specifically on Gin. All right, so next up is 29 Forest Street. Any need to hear from the Affordable Housing Trust?
It's our article, right?
Do we want to vote a position?
I'd move that we vote yes on Article 29.
Second. All those in favor? Okay. Next up Mystic School.
I'm ready. I'd move that we vote yes on 29. Sorry, I'm 30.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Heroes Act, this is also ours.
Move that we vote yes on 30 and 31.
Second.
Do we have to?
31 and 32, sorry.
Is there, there's a level that we have to agree to as well, right? There's specific amounts or we? No, we picked off all the categories. Okay.
What's your, sorry, what's the question?
No, I think it's in the motion.
It's the present agenda piece in CPI.
Yeah.
CPI, that's right. We had to pick that.
CPI and then the.
And then a bump.
100%.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor of 31?
Aye.
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 All those in favor of 32?
Aye.
Select Board, COA. Anybody have a need to hear from COA on this?
No.
Okay, ready to vote a position?
Motion for favorable action on Article 33.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Aye. Okay, School Committee, GIS. Do we want to hear from School Committee on this? I don't, I feel like I don't quite know anything about it, but.
It is, I guess they had to put School Committee, it's planning is doing it with them. That's.
Do you want to hear from Planning? School Committee? Anybody?
I, I don't need to because I, I heard their explanation at State of the Town, but it sounds like, Michelle, you want to.
Well, I can just call somebody to, or we can have them come in and update all of us.
My biggest concern, which I expressed, as you heard, Michelle, to, to the vice chair of the School Committee, was just being extremely clear to town meeting on how this is different than the.
The facilities master plan and.
Correct.
Other things. Yeah.
Now, I, I have gotten comfortable with what they're doing here, that it is different. I, I just think that is going to be a really important communication piece.
Okay, so I'm not prepared to vote that one tonight, anyway. We can skip Forest Ridge for now.
Does anybody want to hear from them?
Does anybody else want to hear them? Because otherwise I can just do it on my time.
I'm okay.
Okay.
I'm okay.
I mean, I would like to, but I can do it myself, just like you're going to do it yourself.
All right. I mean, I can see if someone's available to come in on Monday as well.
Yeah, it seems like we're getting pretty deep stack.
I know, that's what I'm worried about on Monday.
And if it's.
Okay.
You know, maybe you and I can be on the call at the same time and have Brian.
Let's, let's see where we are. And, and given where it falls in the warrant, if we still needed to do it on a night that you're there, Bill, and not otherwise busy, we could always do it before town meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, skip Forest Ridge and then tax levy. Steve, that's just a straight-up, I think, balance the budget, right? Do we even have motion on that yet?
36?
No, but sorry, we.
On 36?
We're skipping Forest Ridge.
It's gonna be provided at the table? That's just a...
They may have, it's a housekeeping piece.
We will, we will vote favorable action on that, I would imagine. It's to balance our tax levy and balance the books. But, but the detail is being worked out, so. And then accept committees and reports, but usually it's just per formative. All right, so I have for guests next week, Town Council to weigh in on ConCon. Tracy can be invited to hear Town Council weigh in on ConCon's bylaw. I have the WCCP, and hopefully Nick to come in and talk specifically about Gin and pickleball. And WCCP will talk about everything at large. Did I miss anything else that people wanna hear from? GOV regs is watch your own. Retirement Board is do your own research. School Committee is me, do research. Okay. And we do have, as you saw from Patty's follow-up email, three different boards and committees to appoint to.
Yes.
So we'll try to get some interviews done next week as well, see who's available of those candidates.
I do have, um, I have two candidates for, um, also making the comments.
Okay. See who else we can get in. Um, if you were wondering where the water abatement appeal went, the appellants were not available to come in tonight. That may be pushed out for several weeks.
No, several months.
Several months. That's why it's not there. So more to come on that, but you did miss something. It just, it was there, and then it was literally dropped because of availability. Okay. Do we wanna go back to State of the Town? Do we wanna just call it a night after we do a consent, consent agenda? How do people wanna spend some time?
Sorry, so Forest Ridge, we skipped on the warrant, it was also on the agenda.
Yep, I think we're just gonna skip. Is there anything more to update?
No, I've got, um, I'm waiting for some additional numbers, and the appraisal hasn't come in yet either on Forest Ridge, so I'm just waiting, and then I'll, I'll provide a memo to the board on, um, the kind of financial piece of it.
Okay.
And if there's other, you know, other questions I can answer about it between now and Monday, or whatever, you know, happy to.
Um, and just to go back to Select Board Committee updates, just in terms of the town manager search, the consultant has reached out to start to schedule meetings with the committee. I realized we got a little bit lost. We voted our external members, and then I think we said we might come back and vote the rest of the members, or just determined that we weren't doing that. So I was trying to check back with what our approach there was, if we need to do anything procedural, or we're just going for it.
Okay, so...
I'm assuming we don't, because we've been...
I think so, yeah, and we got the email from Mary on Saturday as well, about availability, right?
In July, we'd said it was gonna be, this is exact session conversation, too, that when we made those decisions. So I'm just gonna say that, 'cause this is an exact session, right after we found out that Beth was leaving. So do we wanna go to exact session, or do we wanna say this now?
I don't think it's exact session, and I, I don't think it's actually exact session content at this point.
So we had had it be Mike and Anthea. Mike had done a search before, Anthea was going to lead it. In around Labor Day, things were a little bit crazy with Steve starting, and Anthea and I were trying to make sure that we were getting moving with Collins, so I was gonna jump in, but I think the decision of the board in July was, it was Mike and Anthea, and I'd like it to be that. So, I don't think that changes.
I think we've given the nature of it, the last time we did it, we had the chair and the, and the vice chair, but, um, if there's not collective decision on that, it makes sense to stay as we are.
What, what do you mean?
Well, the previous search we did, we had...
No, I understood that part. What does the second part you said mean?
Um, but since we kinda went, if we're going back to the decision from July on that, we can... So the makeup of the search committee is the two we voted, Jennifer and Lance.
Plus Stacy.
Plus Stacy, plus two Select Board members.
Yes.
And I had expressed this to, to one of us as well, that I was happy to jump in, sort of, in around the Labor Day timeframe. There's a lot going on in town, but I also expressed, I think, a couple weeks ago, when we were finalizing the scope of work, that with collective bargaining and some other stuff going on, I didn't think I would have the time to sit through some of the planning meetings with Collins, so.
Do we know what the time commitment's gonna be?
Sounds like a meeting sometime in the next few weeks, and then, um, review of resumes in person, beginning the week of town meeting, uh, and then, uh, interviews also in person sometime, probably later in November.
I wish I could, I just do not have the bandwidth.
Just...
Okay. Pars, do you want to weigh in on that at all?
Uh, no.
Okay. So I didn't realize that they were actually scheduling stuff, so, okay. That means, do we, it means we have applicants, I hope? I don't know.
Hopefully.
Okay.
I think the position's been open for, actually, it's been open for about two weeks, so...
We, we just, and we just had submitted our availability to Mary A. Cardy, who is, you know, um, kind of the principal there, to, to start setting up these meetings. And one of the things that, you know, she had said as well, which, you know, I was not to have a Select Board member, um, chairing the committee at all, right? So it'll be somebody else that we appointed, so we have to select that, and maybe get a, a Zoom meeting together, just to kind of establish the structure of the committee, as well as moving forward with everything else with, with Becca.
Okay. Thank you for that update. I appreciate, Anthea, where you're coming from. I just, I think, given where my schedule is, and even just looking at the run-up to town meeting, um, I did talk with Mike about a week ago and said, "I don't think I can do this," and I mentioned that to the full board, wanted to make sure he still could, wanted to make sure Jennifer still could, um, and she was good, so... I'm just gonna step, step in, I'm gonna step out. All right. Any other committee updates?
The Field Management is meeting tomorrow. Anyone's dying to attend another meeting, but you two are already busy?
We are.
Not just enough to be cryptic, we're...
Yeah, I was teeing you up, there you go.
Community forum at First House Pub, uh, that, that Michelle and I will present on State of the Town. It starts, uh...
7:30?
7:30.
There's also the Planning Board hearing and the warrant, there's also the moderators' hearing, also happening tomorrow. It's just, it's just hearings and meetings palooza right now.
From now until November?
So have fun at Fields, but we will not be there.
State of the Town, I mean...
I'm going to FinCon this week as well, by the way.
I think State of the Town progress is, you know, continuing. You ran the meeting on Friday, I was unavailable. There's a lot of municipal departments, you know, Steve, that we're chatting with, and I think we need to pin, you know, some of those down in the next couple of weeks. I think there's, um, the other big area is on, um, non-levy revenue, where there's, and efficiencies, those are works from three and four, which, Michelle, you had said. There's still some things you wanna look at there.
Yeah.
And, and some recommendations come to this board as well.
Yes. And I think we're gonna hear, I mean, so fines and fees are, you know, revenues, you heard a lot about transfer stations, so there's been, um, I've done a market scan of probably four different departments and fee structures across eight comparable peer communities. There's, there's not millions of dollars in revenue, but there's certainly, like, low hundreds of thousands of dollars in revenue by just adjusting some things to market rates. I mean, you heard, you know, transfer station could, you know, 30, 40 grand, just making changes there, without cardboard, without textiles. There's, uh, some things we're doing in some other departments. So a Select Board, some of them we set, some of them are MGL, some of them are other boards and committees. ZBA has to do some things, so we have to sequence out when those decisions can be made. ZBA applications, that's in their bylaws, but that's looking to be potentially adjusted, so I'll try to get a schedule together, probably after town meeting or during town meeting, of which, which fees or Select Board, where might we recommend they change? And then we need to work with Steve and department heads to understand when these changes could be implemented, if we want to change them. You know, tran, term, permit for the transfer station has to be printed for January 1st, we know that. Other fees could roll in in the calendar year, but we need to understand, you know, munis changes need to happen. What we're collecting, the fee amounts, the books need to balance, there's impacts on Stacy, there's impacts on department heads. So more to come on that, but I'm not trying to look at every, it's, it's hundreds of rows, and I'm not looking to change all of them. Kind of try to pick off those which are just grossly below market. So, yep, more to come on that. Is there something on the consent agenda that's, Patty's connecting?
They're having an event tonight, and you're approving it at the same time.
Oh.
No, I'll do it quickly.
What time did it start?
I put the 20th, this is the event.
It's, it's Wednesday.
It's Wednesday.
Oh, I was like, wow. It's a little late.
Second.
Okay.
You have three minutes to approve it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Wow.
Was there anything on Washington Swanton we need to talk about?
No, oh, um...
Come back to it after the LDAs come, the...
Correct, there's, we're gonna get an updated, better Redline version. And with that, we just weren't gonna be in a position to vote it tonight, there was just a, a...
We were execing on that.
Significant changes, we were in exec.
Yeah.
Not significant, but just a little clarity in terms of the package, so we're gonna get that back. And get it back on for Monday.
It's on both agendas, that's why I asked.
Yes, we were hoping to actually be in a position, we, at least one thing we wanna tweak. So that'll be back on Monday, and Liz, I think, will have that for us. Thanks for asking. All right, consents voted adjourned?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. All those in favor?